Good evening, everyone. We are going to get started. My name is Anne Savage and I am the president of the City School District of Albany Board of Education. On behalf of the board, I welcome you to our meeting. As many of you know, until recently, subject to Governor Cuomo’s executive order, we’ve been meeting virtually since the beginning of the COVID closure. But we’re now back in person, and this is our second in-person meeting. Those of you who are in the room with me tonight know that we are meeting with the necessary social distancing in place. Every person present had their temperature checked on their way into the building and filled out a screening questionnaire. We’re all seated, well over six feet apart, and everyone is and will continue to be wearing a mask unless they feel that they need to remove it to be understood when speaking. Board members, I’m going to remind you that because of the acoustics in the space, it’s helpful if you speak very directly into the microphone through your mask. I’m also extremely pleased that our meeting is being livestreamed and that we will continue to livestream all board meetings going forward, whether in person or virtual. And videos of the meetings will be made available a few days after the meeting on our Board Docs platform. This is a significant improvement that the board has been working towards for some time and has now been sped up by the COVID closure, a little silver lining for us. Because of the limits imposed by social distancing, I encourage members of the public who are here tonight, if you’re speaking in public comment and you notice the chairs are filling up, to consider whether you want to stay and listen in person, or if you can yield your chair to someone else. Right now, we have about half of the chairs empty, but I know there are still people coming in, and we do need to abide by the Department of Health requirements. If you’re listening at home, I thank you for listening from home and ask you to carefully consider whether you would like to come in person or listen from home in the future. We will always select the largest room we can find for our meetings in order to allow as many people to attend as possible, but given the need for social distancing, there is a practical limit as to how many people can safely attend. One other silver lining in terms of public process is that some weeks ago, the board formally modified our public comment policy, and from now on, whether we meet in person or virtually, we will accept public comment of up to three minutes or 400 words by email, voicemail, or postal mail. And of course, when we meet in person, as we are tonight, we also accept public comment in person. This is a big step forward, as we used to accept public comment in person only. For members of the public joining from home, we will show the relevant slides and documents on the virtual meeting screen. For those of you who are here, you can see that we are surrounded by very large screens so that you can see and understand what is happening here. You can also, whether you’re here or whether you’re at home, access the slides at albanyschools.org/boe, where you can get to the agenda link if you prefer to be able to control the slides yourself on your own device. Albanyschools.org/boe is also where you will find instructions to connect to our meetings in the future, or if you need to share those instructions with anyone else. With that introduction, we invite those of you who choose to join us as we stand for In addition to saying the Pledge of Allegiance, we always focus our meeting by restating the mission of the City School District of Albany, which is to work in partnership with our diverse community to engage every learner in a robust educational program designed to provide the knowledge and skills necessary for success. Superintendent Adams, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. A primary focus of tonight’s meeting will be on the significant financial challenges that our district and many others throughout our region across New York and across New York are facing due to the severe economic impact of COVID-19. As we discussed at our last meeting, we will discuss again tonight in greater detail. New York State has informed school districts that it will be withholding at least 20% of our aid for the 2021 school year. For Albany, that will be approximately $20 million and possibly more. This has forced us to consider reductions and changes in our programs, services, and staffing that will absolutely were not planned if this were not for this terrible financial news. We have spent the last week digging deeper into our proposals, as well as identifying additional areas where we could realize additional savings. This is a difficult, difficult process for all of us. I want to commend the members of Cabinet for their tireless work and the seemingly endless hours that they have dedicated to this, after doing the same thing all summer long to develop a rock-solid reopening plan that focuses on the health and safety of all of our employees and students in this COVID-19 environment. This afternoon, I had the opportunity to participate in an important virtual news conference led by Congressman Paul Tonko. This meeting focused on the critical importance of all citizens completing the 2020 U.S. Census before the upcoming September 30th deadline. You may want to know why this is so important, for the very reason that we are having this conversation tonight. Filling out the census is extremely important because those funds that are connected to the completion of the census with regard to the numbers of people living here in Albany is extremely important. As many of you may know, the deadline has been originally stated as the end of October, but the federal government acted several weeks ago to reduce that timeline by a full month. We have until the end of this month, September, to complete our census. New York State Comptroller Thomas Donapoli also participated in today’s news conference, along with municipal and community leaders from several capital region counties. Now more than ever, it is critical for all residents of our community to fill out the census and be counted for our city. If we fall short of a complete count, we will lose out on tens of millions of dollars in federal aid over the next decade. That’s something our community cannot afford under normal circumstances, let alone under the circumstances that we are facing now. If you have not done so already, I am asking all residents to take just a few minutes to complete the census. It’s quick, it’s easy, and it’s safe. And it’s also extremely important. Please visit 2020census.gov or call 844-330-2020. Please be counted for our city. Finally, a reminder that all of our district offices will be closed Friday and Monday for the Labor Day weekend. We will reopen Tuesday and are looking forward to the virtual orientation programs that will kick off the 2021 school year for our students on Wednesday. You may find more information about the first few weeks of school on our website, albanyschools.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Adams. This is indeed a very difficult time in our district and in our state for public education and for many other things going on in our state, so I appreciate your comments tonight. We’re now going to move into the part of our meeting that we call the “public comment period.” The board always welcomes input from the community about the decisions that we’re making. We adopted, as I mentioned earlier, a new public comment policy recently, so you can submit your comments by email, by voicemail, by regular mail, and of course, by coming here to visit with us in person. Comments that are not in person must be made at least six hours prior to the meeting to give us time to collect and verify them as needed. This is another improvement generated in large part by the COVID closure, so another small silver lining from this terrible time. And it’s going to get a bit better even yet, as you will soon be able to submit your public comment directly through the district website. That should be up and running sometime in the next few days, if it is not already, and we thank the communications team under the leadership of Mr. Ron Lesko and especially the work of Mr. Jake Plank for making that possible. We will continue, as we always have, to have a limited three minutes for spoken comments, which translates to 400 words for comments that are sent in writing. The new submission form, as well as our contact information, is on our website. As always, it is one of our core values that our staff deserve to have concerns about them addressed in private, so we ask that if any in-person speakers here tonight have a concern about a staff member, they not refer specifically to that person. And we ask that if a written comment comes in and a specific faculty member is named, that whoever is reading that comment pass over the name as we read. Today, we did not receive any voicemails. We have two people signed up to provide comment in person, so Mr. Halverson, if you’d like to start coming up, you’re going to be first. We also received 10 public comment emails, so after our two speakers have spoken, we will shift to reading the public comment emails. So, Mr. Halverson, if you’ll give Ms. Smith a mo— I mean, I’m sorry, Ms. Wilson a moment to man her timer, which is the first time she’s done this since March, she may need a little moment to get back on track. She will give you both a one-minute and second warning, as we always have. It is a good idea to look up from your prepared remarks every once in a while and make eye contact with the wonderful Ms. Wilson so that you do see those signs when they come up.
Great.
Go ahead.
Good evening, board members and administration. My name is John Halverson, a member of the Faculty of Albany City Schools and a taxpayer of the City of Albany. I am here to advocate for the continuation of arts education, specifically music and instrumental music instruction at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. These are troubling times, and difficult budget decisions must be made for sure, but considering the immense importance of music for our students and community, I ask that every other pathway be considered before cutting deeper into an already overstretched program. Some brief research, if I may. The founder of the University of California Center for the Neurobiology of Learning found that the entirety of the brain’s activity while participating in music becomes heightened, especially in the areas of processing, perception, and in evoking emotional reactions, as well as those areas contributing to fine motor skills. Further research found the approach to music education enhances learning through strengthening cognitive development, especially for children raised in poverty. Music also, quote, “insulates them,” meaning children, “from our stressful urban environments.” Researchers from the University of British Columbia stated in their study of over 110,000 public school students that, quote, “Students involved in extended music engagement do one full year better academically than non-music peers, particularly when engaged in instrumental music sustained over years of schooling. Also, music achievement predicts academic achievement in math, science, and English.” Given this data, it’s little wonder that our school programs have been claimed by some to be the district’s best asset, or the crown jewel of Albany City Schools, to quote one of my former administrators. We’ve represented our district, city, state, and even country for various political and historic gatherings, such as the 75th anniversary of the D-Day invasion in Normandy, France, and have showcased our students’ hard work at civil justice events such as my brother’s keeper, the Black History Month celebrations of New York State, and the first annual state celebration of Hispanic Month. Our choirs, bands, and orchestras are award-winning throughout the greater capital region, and we are constantly told how much we are appreciated and valued. Despite all of this, however, actions paint a very different picture, and somehow the music department and programs have not fared well in the past when faced with district financial shortfalls. The mere fact that I’m advocating for music without knowing the full nature of the upcoming budget only reinforces this idea. Music has been cut despite community outcry, been labeled nice but not necessary by superintendents of the past, been forced to teach lessons in closets, mold-ridden spaces for the better part of a decade, teaching through massive roof leaks or without heat during the winter while jackhammers pound away right outside for new projects. Despite all these shortcomings, we still somehow come out successful. Please, 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 find other areas to cut. We’re already stretched very thin.
Thank you, Mr. Halverson. The next name on the list is Mr. Katie, and we do have a late-arriving third speaker, so after Mr. Katie will be Mr. Edmonds.
All right, good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. As mentioned, my name is Mr. Katie. I am a band teacher here in Albany, serving my 17th year in Albany, my 23rd in education. And I’m here tonight to talk about music sort of as a teachable moment. Music teachers are specialists. New York State says that we are certified to teach music K-12. That’s what my certification says as a teacher. However, in college, we focus on a particular area. You either focus on instrumental music in band or orchestra, or you focus on general music in chorus. Our classes and our coursework are designed to take us in those directions, much like a med student who chooses to focus in, you know, a certain discipline in brain surgery or heart surgery. You know, if they’re a brain surgeon, you don’t necessarily want them, you know, operating on your kidneys. Could they do it? Probably, if they had to, but maybe it’s not the best choice. Over the years, as Mr. Halverson mentioned before me, the cuts in the music program have seen a reduction in our staff and a lot of times, our staff teaching outside what we say are expertise areas. And what that has done to my department, which I want to use this moment to shine a light on, is a severe reduction in morale that I want to bring to the forefront of your minds as you consider some very, very hard decisions that you have to make. We have seen, I have seen, in my time in Albany, in just the last couple of years and then even the last six months, people leaving the music department, young, talented, creative, passionate teachers that came to Albany because they believed in urban education, leaving not because of reduction in force, but because they don’t feel valued, or they’re not secure about their job or what their job is going to look like. So when we talk about cuts and saving money, we all understand it, but there’s also—I just want to make sure that we’re seeing the larger picture of what that does to a department that brings so much value and so much joy and so much creative outlets to the children in Albany. We always get the job done, and we are proud to do so, and I thank you for your efforts and your time in these very, very difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Edmonds, if you can take the other microphone. We’ve established two, so there’s at least a little time to clean in between.
How you doing? Good evening to everybody. I’m a parent, and, you know, no disrespect to anybody else that spoke. I don’t even know if what I want to speak about is—like, this is the right platform. For me, I just wanted to speak—I came to this meeting specifically to express concern and uncertainties as a parent about the City School District’s reopening plan. I feel like all summer as parents, you know, and I know I probably speak for more than one person in here, that we were awaiting, you know, a result or something, confirming that when students were going to start, whether they were going to start. I felt as a parent, everything was really rushed with a lot of uncertainties. You know, I, for one, me and my wife had opted in for in-person. My son attends this school, and we still have uncertainties. There’s a lot of dates that are sporadic, and every date are changing. You know, we have, you know, social media and the news, like, we, you know, we listen to Governor Cuomo, and he clearly states that he doesn’t feel like the school year is going to even finish. You know what I’m saying? He clearly states that he doesn’t think that it’s going to—it’s inevitable that, you know, the coronavirus numbers are going to pop up. We see all over the country colleges that have come back, their cases are spiking everywhere, and as a parent, I’m really, really concerned about that. Also, you know, I feel like parents that really have to, you know, go to work every day and make a living to support their households, I feel like that really wasn’t taken in consideration as well, especially with the virtual learning. There’s a specific amount of time that students are instructed to be on virtual learning per day, and I just don’t feel like, as a full-time parent, how you can juggle all of this while trying to ensure that your child is getting a quality education. I felt the last four to five months of them missing school, or three to four months, however long it was, I felt like it was a loss. Like, we’ve never—obviously, we’ve never seen this in our lifetime, but I just feel like there’s a lot of kids that got left out of the end of the year learning, transitioning into that next grade. And like, the start—like, the whole reopening plan to me is just—I—as a parent, I feel like it’s not stable. I just don’t see it ending good, and I’m like—I—like I said, I don’t know if this was the platform today to speak on this, but I just really wanted to express my uncertainties, and I’m pretty sure there’s a lot of people in this audience that feel the same way. And I just wanted to know if there was any direction that you guys had, or anything new that you guys have for us tonight, because that’s exactly—that’s the reason why I attended this meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edmonds. We are sufficiently out of practice with our in-person public comment that I did not read one of the important lines that we normally read, which is that normally, the board does not respond in public comment, so it doesn’t—it’s not really a time for asking questions. We absolutely do respond to every single email, and if you email us at boe@albany.k12my.us, we will respond, but we don’t normally respond in public comment, except that this entire meeting is really about the topic that Mr. Edmonds has raised, which is the difficulty for every school district in New York State in creating certainty for their parents, particularly for those of us who rely heavily on state aid. We’re going to continue now with our public comment, and I’m going to turn it over to Ms. Smith, who has five letters to read, and then Mr. Elmanyawi will have five letters to read in public comment.
Thank you. Please bear with me, I will be scrolling through my email here. The first letter that we received, the parent says, “Hello. These are such hard times. I will keep this brief. My son isn’t even affected at all by the superintendent’s proposal to make 712 entirely virtual. However, if about half our district was planning on putting their kids back in school, my heart is broken for them, as what are working parents supposed to do now? Leave their young teenagers alone for the entire day to supervise their own education? At minimum, not having a one-to-one ratio for children and Chromebooks is just not acceptable. Dozens, if not hundreds, of other districts have figured this out leading into the 2021 school year. A friend of mine, who is an ENL teacher in our district, knows a family with eight kids enrolled in Albany Public Schools and one Chromebook. What are families like this supposed to do? It is not humanly possible for those kids to even have a shot at an equitable education. This will hurt kids of color and economically disadvantaged families the most. I understand the budget shortfalls are not the responsibility of the board, but I do not think we have done our collective, community due diligence to make sure this will work for everyone. A: What can you do? B: How can I help? I have spent all morning contacting our elected officials, but I really would like to see the board come up with some better solutions of how we can expect families to manage this and for us to, at minimum, get devices for every child so they can have every opportunity to not fall behind.” My apologies if you weren’t able to hear me there, I’ll try better in a moment. I have a second comment that says, “Dear board members, our children are essential, and their education is essential. They are not political pawns to be moved at the will of special interest groups. We demand that they stick to its promise of only a few days ago that parents can choose between virtual and hybrid models of instruction. There has been no explanation for reneging on this promise. Please vote no to the newest plan and force the district and its workers to find a better way. Sincerely, Alicia Luvius, mother of seventh grader and ninth grader and an Albany City District taxpayer.” My third letter comes from Shannon and Matt Mendrick. Dear Board of Education members, as a parent of two children in the middle school and the high school, we are beyond upset about the recent change in the instructional options for the upcoming school year. There is absolutely no substitute for in-person learning. A student needs to interact both with the teachers and other students. Taking that is robbing our children from an education that they all deserve. By requiring students to follow an only-virtual approach, you are taking away from them the opportunity to be fully engaged in their education. A child needs to socialize with others, a whole school year of one very limited instructional approach. How sad and discouraging. Taking a good, quality education away from our children is unconstitutional and unjust. Be educators and think about the students first.” My fourth one comes from Emily Shoup. Hello. I’m beginning this letter from the standpoint that I am an employee of the district, and I am also a product of Albany City Schools, having attended and graduated from this great district. I live in the city of Albany and intend on sending my children to Albany City Schools. I know these are terrible times with COVID and the budget issues that many school districts are facing. However, I urge you to take caution and think carefully about the cuts you choose to make. No one wants to be in these shoes, I understand. The vision of Albany City Schools is to, quote, “be a district of excellence with caring relationships and engaging learning experiences that provide equitable opportunities for all students to reach their potential,” end quote. If that’s our vision, how will we get there if we cut more people who spend time with students on a daily basis? Has the board considered making more cuts to administration or other higher-up staff members who do not have direct time with students? How can we provide equitable opportunities if we take funding from on-core programs and instruction? What about considering pulling away from programs like Flying Classroom or other supplemental programs, even just for a year, in order to consolidate funds to use for staff who have direct role in students’ daily lives? Please take time to consider even just those few points. There are families in our district who can provide different ways for their children to get the rich education they desire, but is that really equitable? Is taking away opportunities for teachers to make close relationships with students really part of what you envision? Our classrooms will already be bursting at the seams with increased student numbers and less teachers due to the cuts from the spring. We need to prioritize funding to support staff that have direct, hands-on interaction with students. If this was not a pandemic, would you be considering keeping such a large portion of students at home? No. You would make other considerations to provide the best in-person experience you can for the students of Albany. I introduced myself as a teacher, but as I close this, I’m thinking more along the lines of being a community member and a mother. I want the best education for my children, one of which will walk through the doors in the fall of 2021. When you make your decision as to where cuts will be made, because despite what we all want, they have to be made in this situation, will you rest assured, knowing you gave it your all? Are you all in for Albany? Thank you for your time.” I have one more. Thank you for your patience. Dear Albany School District Board of Education, I am writing to express my disappointment at the school district’s proposal to eliminate in-person school for 7th through 12th grades. I do not hold anger toward school leaders or board members. My anger is directed at Cuomo and the federal administration. Both want to see the end of public schools. Both want to see the end of public schools. We all know that funding will never fully be restored, even if by some miracle the economy turns around. My heart is truly broken, as I do not think that our district will be able to survive this. All our tremendous gains will all be lost. Families once considering staying after elementary school will surely be flocking to the suburbs. My own family, due to a curriculum based around high-stakes tests, chose a K-8 progressive independent school, knowing we would come back. We did. My daughter flourished at the high, taking a full load of AP classes taught by amazing teachers, and is a senior in the top 10% of her class. A senior that is having her celebratory year ripped from her. Based on my daughter's success, my son returned last year to start seventh grade at Hackett. While he enjoyed the diversity of his classmates, the classes were not challenging, but satisfactory. However, remote schooling was terrible. But like many, we were patient, knowing the huge lift. I truly hope this year will be better. Knowing how, excuse me, knowing now that the district wasted valuable time in preparing plans that would be impossible to execute instead of planning for 100% virtual for the entire year, well, I have little hope that my son will receive a meaningful education. Many independent schools are at full enrollment. So far now, we, so for now, we will be staying in the district. We are making plans for tutors and meaningful learning to supplement what we, what will be a meager educational experience this year. My family has the means, but my heartfelt worry is for many that will be left behind. My heart aches for them and our community, as much as my own children. The loss of school support is being directly felt by the increased violence in our city. Without daily access, it is impossible for teachers and staff to truly check the well-being of their students. How can we respond to their emotional, social needs? How will we stem the tide of families that will leave the district? How will we maintain the type of programming that our children deserve? I know that you do not have the answers, and that your hearts ache too. Cuomo has been actively fighting teachers and public schools for his entire tenure. So perhaps the district should declare bankruptcy to embarrass him, that the capital city does not have a school district. Perhaps we should march in the streets, administrators, BOE members, boards, excuse me, parents, guardians, students, teachers, and staff, to fight for public education and our district to save our schools. Please know that I am reaching out to all my elected officials and will continue to advocate for our schools. But until we have new leadership in Washington, I have little hope. Also know that I, also know that I will keep you in my thoughts as you live with this heavy burden. In peace and sadness, Violetta De Rosa, parent, taxpayer, voter, and district teaching assistant, special ed. Thank you.
Mr. Elmanyawi, when you're ready.
I have five letters. The first states, with schools partially reopening next week and the weeks ahead in whatever safe capacity, there needs to be more parent, guardian, and community forums for elementary, middle, and high schools, so that stakeholders can feel some assurance with the Albany School District. Per yesterday's email, on the partial day of virtual orientation for all students, it failed to mention what time students are supposed to log in to their assigned virtual class, providing they have access to a computer with adequate internet service unless the superintendent intends on giving detailed information at this evening's board meeting. With that being said, I have listened, I have listened to most of the weekly board meetings, but unable to view them due to the not user-friendly and unreliable Microsoft Teams virtual platform. There was no mention of how parents can sit in, figuratively speaking, the reimagining committee that Governor Cuomo instructed school districts to form. Finally, prior to the recent change of no in-person or hybrid option for grades seven through twelve, and in-person for only grade six, and under, and under due to the budget shortfall, I did not hear what actions the district will take if a student claims to have the virus in order to get out of school or uses it to threaten other students or staff members. Thank you and have a safe and healthy Labor Day weekend. The next letter states, dear members of the Board of Education, I'm writing to you as a lifelong resident of the city of Albany, a parent of a brand-new kindergartner in the district, and an employee of the district. I love living in this city, working in this district, and I appreciate the board's commitment to ensuring each child in our city has access to a high-quality and equitable education. I am devastated to hear of the newly proposed budget cuts. After the tumultuous spring budget season that saw the numerous firings of my colleagues and gutting of programs for students to be told three months later that we have to do it all again is heart-wrenching. I understand that this is a challenging time with no easy answers, but I want to strongly encourage you to look for other places to recoup these deficits, rather than more layoffs of our frontline teachers and our paraprofessionals that offer critical and crucial services to our city's children, to my child. I worry that these cuts to important personnel will have devastating and long-lasting effects on our children's social, emotional well-being and overall academic success. I know how seriously the board takes its service to the families and students of Albany, and I hope that you are able to find a positive solution to this terrible situation quickly. Thank you for your time, service, and consideration. Sincerely, Sarah Gunceasque. I apologize if I said that incorrectly. The next letter states, dear members of the board and administration, so much has been lost and changed due to the pandemic. I do not need to detail what families, our community, and our schools have lost. We all know. I do need to ask why we are now losing one bright spot amid all the loss and change. As a retired Albany High teacher and now the parent of a ninth grader, I have long wished for a start time to the school day that aligned with research. It seemed this was to be one benefit of the original reopening plan, a 9:30 start time. Why does the new reopening plan revert to a 7:50 start time? If we want alert participating students in attendance who can focus and retain information, we would be wise to go with a later start time, as research supports the physiological need of teens to go to sleep and wake up later. This is the time to make this move, without the obstacles of bus schedules and sports schedules. It makes a whole lot of sense to shift our start time. Enough has been lost and changed. Please, let's allow our ninth through twelfth graders this one thing to help them be their best at this difficult time. Thank you. The next one reads, dear members of the Board of Education, in addition to the budget cuts causing the district to decide to have no in-person learning opportunities for grades seven through twelve this year, the district is planning to change the later start time of 9:30 for Albany High School students, proposed during earlier plans, to 7:50 a.m. Both the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Academy of Sleep Medicine strongly advise school districts to start middle and high school no earlier than 8:30 a.m. High school students, like all of us, are under tremendous stress due to the changes and uncertainty brought about by the pandemic. Teens' bodies are designed to fall asleep much later than younger students, but they still require adequate sleep for mental, physical, and academic wellness. So why is our district proposing a virtual school plan that assures that most high schoolers will be sleep deprived and barely awake for their first few classes? From the American Academy of Sleep Medicine's statement on later high school start times, studies show that short sleep in adolescents is associated with the following: poor school performance, obesity, metabolic dysfunction, and cardiovascular morbidity; increased depressive symptoms, suicidal ideation, risk-taking behaviors. Delaying middle school and high school start times is associated with a variety of benefits for teen students: longer total sleep time, reduced daytime sleepiness, increased engagement in class activities, reduced first-hour tardiness and absences, reduced depressive symptoms and irritability, improved reaction time. Starting school at 8:30 a.m. or later will help ensure that middle school and high school students begin the day awake, alert, and ready to learn. Knowing that this district is committed to fostering the social and emotional wellness of students, I urge Albany City School districts to take the opportunity afforded by remote learning to follow best practices and the research regarding high school start times. For year, for years, Albany City School District had pointed to bus schedules and athletics as reasons for an Albany High School start time that is 40 minutes earlier than the earliest time recommended by experts. Remote learning removes those barriers to a later start time. I urge you to allow students to get the sleep they need to succeed. It is a low-to-no-cost policy that will have a very positive impact on student well-being and academic achievement. Sincerely, Laura Duran, Albany City School District parent. And my last letter today states, first, I want to thank you for the work you do, now more difficult and complicated than ever. I do not envy the decisions before you and appreciate your hard work for our students. I am heartbroken at the prospect of the dissolution of Albany International Center, as are all my Albany ENL colleagues. Although I have never worked there, I was teaching in the same building, North Albany Academy, for a while. It was clear to me that what a powerful impact the program has on our newcomer students and families. It has been nurtured and built carefully. We are all so proud of this program, a jewel in our district. I have also worked as an ENL teacher at TCC. Likewise, it is clear to me how dedicated those teachers are, having created a safe space and strong community for our students who desperately need it. What I want to say is this, it strikes me that both these two programs on the chopping block, so to speak, serve some of our most vulnerable students in a time when our awareness is heightened, that we are focused as an urban district on equity and social justice. It seems wise to use this lens as we make these difficult decisions to cut programs and staff. Who will be affected? Will academically struggling students, Black and Brown students, and ELLs be disproportionately affected? In the current plan, it seems to me, yes. The family of these students do not always have the language, cultural knowledge, confidence, or resources to advocate for their students. It is part of my job to do so, hence this email. Please consider alternatives that share the pain across the district with programs for all kinds of students, not just our most vulnerable. Respectfully, Laura Abate. Laura Abate, scholar at Chief Academy.
Thank you very much for reading, Ms. Smith and Mr. Elmanyawi. We appreciate, we on the board appreciate all public comments, and we find hearing from community members incredibly valuable. Our contact information, again, is on albanyschools.org/BOE. You can find both information there for public comment and for routine correspondence with us. One last thing I just want to mention is that if you choose to send us an email, we can't always tell whether you mean that for public comment or whether you mean that just as routine correspondence. So we always ask people if they're not clear. We recognize that it's sensitive. People may not want their name read out loud without approving that. It can be, and we, of course, don't accept anonymous comments. So we only read comments once we get confirmation. So if you sent a letter and it was not read, that is why we didn't hear confirmation from you. This is one of the many benefits of getting the form on the website, where you'll be able to give your confirmation at the beginning. So that said, this brings us to the close of our public comment period. We encourage those of you who spoke in public comment to stay for the balance of the meeting if you have the time available to you. We now move to a very brief routine consent. This is the part of the meeting we call routine consent. Under normal circumstances, the routine consent agenda consists of many, many items. Tonight, we only have one item, but this is the time period where we approve contracts, routine HR matters, that kind of thing. And each board member reviews each item carefully, and we vote on them as a group with no discussion. That allows us to use our meeting time more efficiently. Nonetheless, each board member has the option to set aside any routine consent item in order to require a separate discussion and vote on that item. This is a little bit odd. We've never, ever, in my experience, had a routine consent item, routine consent with only one item on it. So there would be no value to setting anything aside. We're just going to take a motion, but we will certainly have discussion. Can I get a motion for routine consent? Ms. Wilson, in a sec, excuse me, in a second from Dr. Titor. Is there any discussion on the one item on routine consent? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the routine consent agenda in its entirety, such as it is. Mr. Elmanyawi, did you care to vote for routine consent? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is labeled Discussion Action: Endorsement of the 2020-21 CSD Reopening Plan. I want to draw your attention, board colleagues, as well as to members of the community who are here and in public, to the fact that there is an extremely short amount of time for discussion tonight on this item. It is only five minutes. There is a brief presentation from the superintendent leading up to that discussion, but I just wanted to orient people to the fact that there is a very good reason why we have such a small amount of discussion on the agenda for this item. It is purely, this item is purely to discuss a resolution that endorses, provides the board endorsement for the reopening plan. We have allocated tremendous amount of time tonight instead to talk about what many of you are here to listen to, which is the significant fiscal reality focused on, forced on us by a 20% reduction in New York State aid. That topic is a deeply difficult and deeply emotional one for every single person here, and we will use all the time we need to talk about that in its entirety. We will not, however, act on that piece of it tonight. That, at the earliest, would be acted on on Tuesday. Tonight, the only action is on endorsing the reopening plan that the superintendent is just going to walk us briefly through. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. Just making sure it's there. So we would like to just go over some of the points with regard to the plan and the development of the plan. We started out, of course, we always start with our vision, our mission, and our goals, and looking to make sure that everything that we do, it aligns with that. We don't always agree on how to get there, which is why we have so many participants with regard to our committees and getting input, that we try to listen to every single piece and then look at what those components are with regard to the restructuring plan. So our objective is to share the reopening plan with the board, and we have several discussion topics. There's an interim guidance document from the governor's office, which also has the New York State Education information and the Department of Health, the collaborative plan development, public forums, FAQs that have been posted on the website, and the New York State Education document submission, and the Department of Health document submission. As we move through, we look at the committee representatives that spoke for the education, for the, I'm sorry, for the elementary school level. And I do want to thank them for all of their time and consideration with all the many, many aspects that they had to look at. Also, at the middle level, the same pieces, we have the committee members represented there, and I thank them for all of their work. The elementary level was led by Dr. Cecily Wilson Turner, our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Instruction. Our middle level was led by Lori McKenna, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. And then we have our high school component, and you can see the members that were on that planning committee in looking at those aspects that directly impact our high school. And that was led by Karen Bechtel, who is the Director of Curriculum and and that was led by Karen Bechtel, who is the Director of Curriculum and Professional According to the guidance, these were the required elements within the plan that we needed to meet. I won't read all of them to you, but our plan has been posted, and each of those areas has been explained in our plan, and it does align with the interim guidance for in-person instruction at pre-K through 12th grade schools. From our feedback surveys, part of the data that we were able to use, 51, 53% of our population looked, selected virtual, and 46.9% selected in-person or hybrid. For food service, we did break down those who were not looking at pickup, and that was 36%. Those who were doing in-person and would receive onsite breakfast and lunch, 47%. And then the portion of our population that would do the pickup would be 17%. We also looked at transportation. Those who were eligible and did not need transportation, 11%. Those who were eligible, 22.1%. Those who were doing virtual, 43.9%. And eligible and needed transportation, 22.4%. This captures the reopening forums that we were able to conduct in a virtual format, and in total, grand total, there were 72 forums that were held, 15 district-level and 57 held by the buildings. Attendees, the total attendees, 5,317, and the questions, 5,452. The majority we did receive, we have been still trying to get caught up on some of the frequently asked questions, but we do have them posted on our website. We have also distributed them according to the school, because at the individual forums, there were questions that were unique to that school. So those schools will then send that information out to their communities. We have the remote learning option, which we did explain, which was different from homeschooling, and that option was available for pre-K through 12. And then we have the pre-K through 6th grade in-person model. Our students with disabilities are offered from pre-K all the way through 12th grade and in-person model as well. So the documents that were submitted, these are the dates. We had to submit our information and receive our business affirmation. We received our New York Forward Safety Plan confirmation, and then also the reopening plan submitted to the state. And so you will see the dates there. And then we've also included as part of the documentation in Board Docs, the actual confirmation form. There are any questions?
Thank you very much. I want to remind everyone on the board that we are here right now, in this section of the agenda, only talking about a single resolution, which you can find, I don't know, Mr. Baker, if you want to display that, I am going to read it out loud. It's important to make clear exactly what we're voting on in this case, because there are so many different things happening in our district right now. So I'm going to read this resolution, which is also going to be displayed on your screen. Whereas, on or about July 13, 2020, the New York State Department of Health issued interim guidance for in-person instruction at pre-K to grade 12 schools during the COVID-19 public health emergency for the 2020-21 school year. And whereas, on or about July 16, 2020, the New York State Education Department released reopening guidance for schools for the 2020-21 school year, and required reopening plans to be submitted to the New York State Education Department on or before July 31, 2020. And whereas, the Superintendent of Schools, working with teachers, support staff, administrators, and community groups, submitted the school district's reopening plan on July 31, 2020. And whereas it is, and this is a very important part, understood that all reopening plans for school districts and the inherent implementation of both in-person and virtual or remote instruction will change as circumstances evolve and governmental orders and guidance continue to be issued. And whereas, the Board of Education is involved in this critical policy matter, now therefore, the Board of Education resolves as follows. The Board of Education hereby endorses the reopening plan and efforts of the school district as led by the Superintendent of Schools. The Board recognizes that any such plan must be flexible and adapt to the COVID-19 public health emergency as it evolves and as government orders and guidance are issued. The Superintendent of Schools is authorized and expected to modify and implement any reopening plan or procedures based on such evolving circumstances and government orders. Superintendent of Schools shall report to the Board as appropriate on the status of reopening and any changes in the plan and procedures that had to be made. So in summary, what we're voting on in this resolution is simply endorsing of the process and the plan that was submitted back in July, as the superintendent has explained. As you know, we all had originally planned to vote on this back in the middle of August. On advice of counsel, we did not act at that meeting because there was not yet an executive order to clarify exactly what laws and regulations would be modified for this coming year. We had all hoped that that would happen between then and now, but it has in fact not. So here we are with school getting ready to begin, and there is still no executive order from the New York State clarifying which laws and regulations are going to be different in this calendar year, in this academic, academic year. But still, on advice of counsel, we have decided to act on the resolution this evening. Please keep in mind that the document that the district submitted, while technically called by state requirement, the 2020-20-21 reopening plan, it is not, in fact, one single specific plan, the kind of plan that you would make if you were planning to do something. Rather, it is, as described in the resolution, a menu of plans: in-person, virtual, and hybrid. Equally important, the resolution recognizes the need for our administrative staff to have the flexibility to move among those options based on the public health regulatory and, of course, as we face this now together, the fiscal reality on the ground throughout the year. In my conclusion here, the resolution is to endorse the work of the reopening teams, who worked incredibly hard this summer, and the general content of the plan. It doesn't limit the district to any one way of reopening schools, and it doesn't preclude the conversation we're about to have about the major budget and staffing crisis that we are going to have this year as we face this together. That conversation will take a tremendous amount of attention and time tonight, so I'm going to start by simply entertaining a motion to adopt this resolution. Once we have it seconded, we can have any conversation, if we need further conversation after 72 forums. So a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Board Member Crecci. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Board Member Crecci?
I just want to go on the record to say, I'm extremely frustrated at this. I really thank all the cabinet and administrators and staff who participated in the reopening plan, and as well as the parents and the members of the community who participated in the forums. I am beyond frustrated at the state for putting us in this position. As you see, they issue, the state issued, issued the guidelines for reopening plans in the middle of July, and they certainly could have predicted then some of the fiscal changes that have been made known to us quite recently. This resulted in so much wasted time, so much wasted effort, and so much wasted money even on our part, preparing for possibilities that now can't be. And it's so difficult in terms of what it's done to the morale of the staff and teachers, and in terms of what it's done to parents in being able to plan for the year ahead. Well, I'll be voting for this, but I'm so frustrated that the state put us in this position. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Board Member Crecci, and thank you in particular for directing your frustration, as we all have, at the situation that we're finding ourselves in, which is, you know, extraordinarily frustrating as it comes from the outside. Any further discussion, Board Member Mann?
I want to, I want to echo what Board Member Crecci just remarked on, but I also want to say, one of the main reasons why I want to really support this plan is because it doesn't have students entering the building until, I believe, the 21st of September. So that was her.
Board Member Mann, I'm just going to just remind everyone that nothing in the plan that we're voting, the resolution we're voting on now, has that level of specificity in it. All that's in the reopening plan that we're endorsing tonight is the three-part plan, the hybrid in-person and virtual models as a, as a concept, providing flexibility to the administrative staff to select dates and establish dates as they need to. I concur absolutely with what you were about to say. I would just like to hold that to the conversation about the actual reopening, which we're going to do next, and I'd like to hold this conversation to be only on the content of the resolution and our endorsement of the flexibility built into the plan, if we can do that. Board Member Wilson?
And I know we're soon to be at time, and I just wanted to again reiterate our support for all the work of all staff, the families who contributed and gave their input, and it's, again, the work that we did to model and imagine all three scenarios that are outlined in the plan. So we greatly appreciate your efforts, and we're willing to move forward with you.
Thank you very much. Any further conversation? Dr. Totor?
I just want to echo what everybody else said. No good, no good deed goes unfinished from the state. So thank you for all the hard work you guys have done, cabinets, open, parents, all these councilors hours in the forums, but this is what we get from the state. What I again want to reiterate, what President said, is that this resolution basically gives the superintendent the flexibility to pivot and change between the models in case something else happens. That's the only thing we are working on.
Okay. Any further conversation on the resolution? All in favor of adopting the resolution as read? That is unanimous. I appreciate, board colleagues, all your brevity on this subject. I know we all have very deep feelings about these subjects, especially as expressed by Board Member Crecci. And now, we will turn to the meat of the matter, which is how we are tackling the actual implementation of the reopening plan. Superintendent Adams?
Thank you again, Madam President, members of the board. We appreciate your support, and we are getting ready to engage in the conversation with regard to our school aid reduction and the impact of that school aid reduction. This is a very difficult time, and I know people are hearing that over and over and over again. And it is absolutely unreal to believe that the time and the care that we have taken collectively, and I don't say we, meaning just a separate group, many of you sitting in this room have been a part of that process, and you know the time and the effort that was taken to build something that was really strong for our students. When we look at the first look-back period that the state is taking, and it is a 20% reduction, part of those funds that we would receive have already started to be withheld. So this is very real for us. It is very real. We also know that moving forward in December, there will be a second look-back period. And at that juncture, we will find out if there are additional reductions that would need to happen, and then we would be looking at mid-year adjustments. Part of our comments have been around what happens next? What about our students? We think and live our vision and mission every single day, and what I don't want is for people to think that because of what we believe in our vision and mission and goals is compromised by actions that are not focused on what the goals are, because they truly are. We are focusing, and we are trying to do the very best that we can. And so as I proceed through this presentation, it will capture some of the background information and create that understanding of where we are, how we got here, what are some of those components that play a part in the decisions that we have to make, and then what is it that we are looking at? I will say right now that we have a number of items under consideration. We will be working until the next board meeting, which happens to be Tuesday, so that we can drill down a little bit closer to say, here are some, some ideas, and here are some recommendations with more certainty. So as we move forward, again, we always focus on our vision, mission, and goals. We know that what we do, and I do have to say this, we know the things that we have done in this district before me and alongside me being here, what has led to the success that we've been able to see with our students. We know that. We know that a 20% reduction threatens the very fiber of all the things that we have put in place. We know that. It is not easy to try and think differently about how we deliver services to our children in very different ways when the resources are being reduced to that extent. So our objective tonight is to update the board with regard to the impact of the state and federal reductions for this upcoming school year, as well as update the board on state and federal aid reduction impacts on delivering in-person instructional models. The background piece, we've talked about this before, but I will hit the high points because we've heard this numerous times, but I want to make sure that we are very, very clear that the information that we received from the Division of Budget came on August 20. We had a board meeting shortly after that, where we were able to discuss the impacts initially of what this may mean for us. With no federal action to provide COVID-19 relief funding since the enactment of our state's budget, the state began withholding 20% of most local aid payments. For our district, the 20% reduction of foundation aid is approximately $16.5 million. If 20% is applied to all state aid, meaning foundation, categorical, building, transportation, excess costs, it appears that this impact will, will impact us at $23.2 million. Additional considerations? The district originally, in 2021 state aid allotment, was included in the federal, Federal Cares Act funding. Federal guidance was received with regard to these funds, and that represents a reduction of $2.3 million, and you can see the calculations on the slide. The inequitable impacts of these decisions and these reductions. According to the Alliance, the Alliance of Quality Education on September 1, and a study that they completed, a 20% cut in state aid to schools equals $5.7 billion, $4 billion, of which would come from 205 high-needs districts, including Albany. So translation for that means that schools with the highest needs will be hit the hardest. High-needs school districts are facing an average cut of $2,626 per student, while low-needs districts are facing an average of $873. And what that means is, school districts like ours that have roughly 45 or higher percent dependency on state aid are impacted much heavier than those school districts who only have a smaller percentage of state aid dependency for their funding. Another translation, we are at 45% dependency on state aid. Other districts may only be dependent on state aid for 10% or 20%. We have a greater dependency on state aid. That means we have more money coming from state aid. Therefore, the reductions are greater for us. This chart puts in perspective where Albany stands in relation to some of our neighboring districts with regard to the total foundation aid with a 20% reduction, and the reduction in student expenditure or the, the amount per student would be reduced by $1,506. What you're looking at in the chart is only the foundation aid, because the total impact in Albany, when you include foundation and state aid, all aid reductions, we're looking at $18.8 million to $25.6 million. Considerations for budget reductions. One of the pieces that we have escalated to higher attention is One of the pieces that we have escalated to higher attention is with the Council of Big Five, looking at some of our larger school districts for which we are an affiliate, is that charter school tuition reduction. This has not been decided, but we are advocating that if we as a public school system have been reduced by 20%, then the funds that go to the charter schools also be reduced by that same 20%. At this juncture, we do not have a decision on that, but it is something that we are advocating for. We've already talked about the restructuring of Albany International Center. We've talked about the restructuring of Tony Clement Center for Education. We are looking at reductions in administrators, faculty, and support staff, and the restructuring of our instructional models and delivery of services. Additional budget impacts. For several times, we've received conflicting information, but it has been cleared up with regard to social distancing protocols, the arrangements of desks in the classroom, and the facility limitations. Classrooms are not all the same size. So some of our classrooms with social distancing, we may have 10 students in the class, we may have 12 students in the class, it may go as low as eight students in a class, depending on the size of the room. So each of our rooms have to be measured and configured individually. And I'd like to say thank you to our maintenance and operations team as they are getting excess materials and furniture out of our rooms. We will be storing that and labeling that so that we can maximize the space for our students. COVID-19 medical accommodations and the expansion of FMLA. And while we support and understand that there are medical reasons that will limit employees from attending work in person, we have had 164 requests have been submitted to Human Resources. The concerns that we have at that juncture means, do we have enough staff to staff the in-person learning? Because if someone is a virtual teacher and cannot be in a classroom, then we have to look at either hiring a sub for that position, or we have to hire another teacher for that position. We don't have the funding to do that. The PPE expenses for our district alone, with the unbudgeted equipment and supplies that will be recurring expenses, we are at half a million dollars already. And this gets us started so that we can have packets for our teachers, we can be ready with our students for replacement masks, and we have available PPE for administrators and support staff. This is to get us started. We are already in the queue so that we are on a regular rotation of having a 90-day supply so that those orders are done in a timely manner, and we are already in the queue so that we do not run out of the PPE. Issues with that revolve around, every school district in the country is vying for PPE. Every school district in the country. So back in March, we made those decisions about making sure that we were ordering so that we would not run out, because companies have also limited the supply that you can order at one time. So we have looked at what we needed to do so that we could be in the queue, so that we would have the proper PPE at our schools. Transportation limitations, we've talked about this before. The bus capacity has significantly been impacted. Students are able to sit one student per seat. If they are siblings and of the same household, then they can sit two to a seat. Also, this presents challenges with routing and scheduling, because now instead of a full bus, there may be two runs that have to pick up at one bus stop. So we have to look at the routing and the scheduling pieces there. Projected staffing reductions, and these are whole numbers. Right now, they're based on average salaries, because we still have work to do before Tuesday of next week. Administrative restructuring, we're looking at 13.4 positions. With the restructuring of AIC and TCC, we are looking at 33.5 positions with ABSTA, which is our teachers. And we know that those are other positions with that, like behavioral specialists, et cetera. But in this category, we're looking at the ABSTA with 33.5, ABSU, which would be our support staff, seven. Clerical reductions, we're looking at 10 positions through ABSU and two with our MCs, and that's our management confidential positions. Reductions due to virtual instruction, largely with 7th grade through 12th grade, 12 positions, 12.7 positions for ABSTA, 100 positions for ABSU. This is largely because in a virtual environment, hall monitors and homeschool coordinators and other positions that would be reduced fall into that category, including maintenance and operations. Wraparound services with regard to ABSTA, 34.5, and ABSU, nine positions. So for a total of 222, yes, .1 positions. The next slide shows you the breakdown of what those positions would look like with regard to administrative restructuring, principals, assistant principals, and non-school-based administrators, faculty and staff at AIC and TCC, TIFIS office managers, administrative assistants for clerical reductions. I just talked about the reductions due to the virtual instruction. Wraparound services, additional positions, family engagement coordinators, behavioral specialists, social workers, school psychologists, TOSSes, and coaches. This slide shows the staffing ratios, and the last column, I do have a typo there. It should be percent change versus the proposed 2021 column, so I will correct that. But you can look and see the breakdown by unit, and the additional reductions with the FTEs in the next to the last column, and then the percent change. Our enrollment is decreasing, and so naturally, there would be a decrease in staff with a decrease in enrollment. But when you look at where we projected, we are below our projections. Our pre-K program, we are seeing a significant reduction in that program, and I know that Dr. Wilson Turner will be available to answer any questions, should the Board have questions about that. And then you can see the breakdown of the ratios, student-to-employee group ratio. The next column just puts the salaries in perspective, and I think what is really important to note is that at 222 FTEs, we are at 9 million .1. I will say it because it's on everybody's mind, this is devastating. The next area looks at salary and additional compensation, and this would, these are other areas of reduction. So we are looking at FTEs, we're looking at supervision, we're looking at additional stipends, we're looking at the benefits with regard to the payroll taxes, retirement, health insurance, and other items that would be included would be various equipment in various programs, field trips, communications, community schools, athletics. And so we, with those items added to our salaries that we looked at, the nine, then we are at $16.1 million. Additional challenges and next steps. I've already talked about the in-person classes. We're at an average of 10 to 12, but that is based on the class space available and the configuration of the room. Medical accommodations and expanded FMLA, and I'll just reiterate, there are 164 of those. It would result in hiring subs or hiring additional teachers. Also, the complications are the challenges of a teacher having to teach virtual and in-person at the same time, which is not advisable. And we know that that is something that is a challenge to do, but it is still a challenge. Next steps, examine increasing the virtual instructional model and review our mandated and non-mandated services. At this time, Madam President, I open the floor for questions.
It's hard to say thank you for a report like that, but we do thank you, because everyone in this district needs to face the reality that is in front of us. A 20% state aid reduction across the board is an incredibly inequitable way to distribute the pain. For a district like ours, it's incredibly hard. 45% reliance on state aid means that a 20% state aid reduction impacts a significant chunk on our budget. And I must tell you, as much as I feel for the students of Albany, I feel for the students of Utica, I feel for the students of Rochester, I feel for the students of Buffalo, who have a much larger percentage of their budget based on state aid. I cannot imagine what those families, and what those teachers, and what those administrators are facing. Even regionally, Schenectady and Troy both face around 60% of their budget in state aid. So while things are bad for us, they could be even worse. I appreciate the Superintendent's use of the word devastating. This is a devastating impact, like nothing any of us have ever lived through before. It is going to change our district, and it is not going to change our district for the better. That said, we know what we stand for here. We know what our core values are. Our core values are to treat every student in the best way we can for that student. That is what we call equity. It is about making sure that the students who need the most get the most. And that is, I know, at the heart of every decision that the Superintendent and the Cabinet have been making as they have come to present this to us. Board colleagues, it is my recommendation, as I often do, to try and give us some way to channel our conversations so that it just does not become totally free-flowing, that we divide our questions in the following way. Slides one through eight of this presentation were essentially material that we knew already. These were things that were shared with us leading up to today, things that we knew really last Thursday, the proposed reduction to 712 virtual, the restructuring of the AIC and the Tony Clement Center, those kind of things. So I'm thinking we will start with those slides, slides one through eight, and ask any questions we have about those. The next chunk of slides, slides nine through 14, are the specifics around those prior proposed reductions, right? It's the actual dollars and the actual line items and job positions. So I'm suggesting that we take that as our second chunk of information that we ask about. And then we come to slide 15. Slide 15 is brand new tonight. I know that we got a, you know, couple-hour notice that this slide might be here, but that's about all the notice we've had. And this is a very big question. The words "examine increasing the virtual instruction model" mean exactly what they say. They mean examine increasing the virtual instruction model. And so I believe we will have a very robust conversation around slide 15. I would just like to wait to have that till we get there, so that we can check some of these other boxes before we get there. And then I know, based on Board Member Mann's question or Begun's question, and also some of the routine, some of the public comment, that we have some specific questions about what's currently planned with school opening very soon. I know that there are questions about dates and Chromebooks and those kinds of specific things, so I'm suggesting we hold on those questions until the very, very end, after we've gotten through slide 15. So are people comfortable with that as a structure? As always, we will try and do one question per Board member, so that everybody gets around on each section, and then if there's time and willingness, we can go for a second round of questions. So who has the first question on slides one through eight? I'm going to go with Ms. Smith, because it makes it easier for me if we go this way. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. And again, I echo, this is just awful and devastating. I almost have the words. Thank you, Superintendent and Cabinet, and all that have worked so hard. Superintendent, this may be a silly question, but it's just kind of hit me that I didn't know the answer. And this has to do with the Cares Act funding. That's an allocation, I assume that's formula-driven, but the fact that we have, we have two years in which to spend the funds, is it a 50-50 split? Is there any flexibility to move some of those funds from year two to place now?
So I will start with the response, and then I will ask that Ms. Roaring chime in. So the Cares Act funding is two years, and it's given to us so that we can determine, do we want to use all of it now, or do we want to use 50% or whatever we spend now? And then we hold that, you know, in advance, if you will, for another year. But we have two years to spend that money. And so I would like for Ms. Roaring to answer any other questions, or just elaborate on that.
At the time, we anticipated that it was about 50% of the funds that were allocated to us for the 2021 fiscal year, but we certainly started the conversations about whether or not it would be prudent for us to look at using additional funds in the 2021 year rather than holding any of those funds for the 2122 school year.
I would just, if I might add, one of the things that we talked about was in the uncertainty of funding, is it better for us to go ahead and spend what we have now versus holding it? Because we do not know what December will hold. And so if, if there is anything that happens that might reduce that, then it would be hanging out there.
I just want to make sure I understood that. The, as I understood Ms. Smith's question, we can, and your answer, we can distribute the spend, the expenses, the use of that fund over two years at our discretion. So we can spend half now, three-quarters now, 10% now, whatever we feel, and then save the rest for the second year. But did I understand you to say that there's some potential that that could be jeopardized if we don't spend it now?
Simply because we don't know. We just don't know. It's just uncertain.
So we don't actually have the cash in hand? It's a promise for cash payment later?
So Ms. Roaring, did the full allocation come in, and we are able to hold on to that allocation?
So this is like a grant process, as we do for Title and IDEA and other sources. So we file our application, and then we receive distributions as we expend those funds. So we do not have the cash in hand.
So it's a reimbursement-style program, I understand. Thank you very much for the clarification. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you again, and my question is on slide eight, specifically the restructuring of the AIC and Tony Clement. I think if people see that, they wonder if it's cross-the-board elimination, or whether we're going to shift to a model where we embed the students and those strategies into our schools. And with that, what do we do also with the staff that we are restructuring to? Are we going to utilize them in the same way?
I would direct that question to Ms. McKenna, please.
Sure. So we're in the process of identifying what that restructuring looks like. For AIC, what we are doing, what we are proposing is embedding a school within a school, so we would have AIC at Albany High School, and they would be in a sheltered program specifically designed for students who would typically be at AIC at North Albany. We're also looking at restructuring Tony Clement Center, and looking at what that grade level configuration looks like, which would then reduce the number of staff that we would need in that restructuring.
Are you okay? Board Member Creji?
I'm just concerned, so concerned and so heartbroken over this necessity of bringing everyone in students' grade through 12, making them go through that virtual model. I know- I know that in the spring, we had so many problems with maybe, I can't remember the exact proportion, but maybe 25% of our students who either never or very rarely were willing to log on to their classes for whatever reasons. And I am guessing that a lot of our 7 through 12 students whose families opted to send them in person may be those students that are struggling, whether they do not have adequate internet access, whether they have a crowded household situation, whether they are homeless or living with family, whether there are various substance abuse, mental illness, all these reasons. And I just want to implore once again what I said in the last meeting about requiring cameras to be on. I was so glad that you guys said that there was flexibility if a student were to say, "I have a reason that I want the camera off." But I do not think it is fair to put the burden on a 12- or 13-year-old student to reach out to five or six different teachers to say, "My parent is mentally ill," or "I am homeless, and I have these reasons why it's really embarrassing or humiliating for me to turn that camera on." That's not something we should be putting on our kids, and I'm worried that that may be a reason that kids won't log on. I know I saw in the news this week a story from California about two little girls with their Chromebooks trying to log on from a Taco Bell parking lot. And that's, it's so sad to think of our kids doing that. I really want to make sure that students can participate in their own way if they have these issues. I know we want to build involvement and engagement, but I want to meet the kids where they are and at that comfort level. And I think in the end, that's going to lead to greater participation and engagement. Thanks for hearing me out.
Dr. Tatur?
I don't think devastating is the right word. I feel physically violated. That's how I feel. And this is ridiculous. I want to add on to what Member Creji said in the fact that having video on will also create a stress on the feed. And so that might be something for us to consider as well if the internet connection is poor. My question was actually going to be with respect to transportation. If we go to a virtual 7 through 12, as we're discussing, that means there's no transportation required for CDTA. So there should be a savings on that, which should be the upwards of a million, I would guess. Is that already planned into this budget? Or are those numbers yet to be subtracted out?
I'm going to ask that Mr. Lesko, please come to the microphone, please. He supervises transportation, and he works with our contracts.
Now it's on? Now it's on. So we've had that conversation with CDTA, and I don't have a definitive answer for you yet. You are correct that we would be using less of the service that we are contracted with them to use. It's not as, it's not as simple as that. So we're going to have to continue to have conversations with them over time. They're open to that conversation. So I do think there will be some savings, but at this time, we can't say what that would be.
Board Member Mann?
Okay. So when we talk about restructuring AIC and Tony Clement Center, that's going to be less use of the buildings, correct? And so has that been factored into some of the cost savings?
That's part of our future work because we do realize that there may be some opportunities to consolidate so that we can not use one building or so. But we don't have that completely ironed out just yet.
Although I will just add, I think some of the savings have already been calculated in, in terms of the reduction in hall monitors, the reduction in cleaning services for a building that's used much less than it would be if it were fully occupied. That is incorporated, to my understanding.
And my interest was, you know, if we take an entire building offline, if that would be, but thank you. Can I ask one more question? It's on slide eight.
Is it a short one? Since that was a short one, you go for it.
So I know that it hasn't been decided about the charter school tuition reduction. Do we know a timeframe and would hear back?
No, I do not. I did, I have been communicating back and forth with the Conference of Big Five, but we've not received any information back yet.
And I'm just going to take a moment to set the context for folks who aren't as intimately familiar with our budget as some of the folks in this room. Our charter school payment is roughly, Mr. Roaring, in the ether can correct me if I've gotten this off, but it's roughly $35 million. So 20% of $35 million is around $7 million. So even if it's somewhat less than that, it's going to be in the range of $5 to $7 million. It is a very, very significant amount of money. It impacts our budget a dramatic amount. So Ms. Roaring, if you want to narrow down my range, that's fine. But I just wanted to set that expectation about how much money we're talking about.
Board President Savage, you did a wonderful job of setting that range. Thank you.
Ms. Elmanyawi?
I'd like to begin by just showing how, or explaining how frustrating this is and how really upset I am. Looking at this now from the inside, we're roughly $20 million down. And there are, and I don't mean to point fingers at people in this country, but there are folks that are making billions of dollars every single day. And they could literally fund what we're missing, what all of these schools are missing in a matter of an hour or two of their wealth-making. So that's incredibly frustrating to me, to see that we're here squabbling over how we're going to get our kids educated, and somebody can make $13 billion in 24 hours. It's just, it's incredibly frustrating to me. So I don't have anything else positive to say. And I hate to put it like that, but this is beyond devastating, and it's going to affect a lot of lives. So I'm going to urge whoever it is that will listen to consider doing the right thing to our children, for our children, and for our communities. Thank you.
That is one question each on slides one through eight. Do we feel ready to move on to the next set of slides? Okay, moving on now to slides nine through 14, which are the detailed proposed reductions as a result of the restructuring of AIC, TCC, and the 712 virtual that we knew were coming in concept. But now this is more detail. Does anyone have a question on seven to 12? I'm sorry, slides nine through 14. Ms. Wilson, would you like to go first?
So I want to also echo what my board colleagues essentially are stating, that not only is this inequitable for it to occur now in the midst of a global pandemic in the nation's highest economic downturn and highest unemployment, it truly does grieve me as well, knowing families were under-resourced and isolated all summer. And then to find out at the final hour that school, as you know, it is in jeopardy, also grieves me deeply. And I always entered the twists and turns on this board journey and think, this is the most difficult period. But there's always something that is far more challenging and difficult, such as now. And really thinking about a 20% look-back period, I feel like vocabulary is very important. And I more so call them retroactive cuts. And I know that it's not strictly us that are doing this in isolation. It's across every sector in our state because our state is dealing with, you know, grappling with sort of economic downturn as well. As a board, I want to say that we are definitely elected to be a voice. And I tell you that that's where my fury is directed, is that the powers that not only caused the pandemic to take hold of our nation, but also caused New York to be further constrained in this way. And I, what I would say, in addition to that, although people think we are their voice, we do also have a front-row seat to what transpires at the district level. And these are not arbitrary decisions. We do work, and especially our district staff, especially the cabinet and superintendent, work to the 11th hour, crafting, creating, imagining scenarios that are stricken at a moment's notice with a pen. So when people say, you know, things like, "This is a war on public education," we do have to contextualize it further, that this is like a war on families. It's people who cannot move, people who are in historically redlined communities, people who live in communities plagued by violence. And the one institution which was often an outlet for, or a resource, or a safety net, is being grossly underfunded. So I feel that when you're born, you know, you're guaranteed to a free public education in this country. It's your right, and I feel like that's a travesty. So I did want to speak to that. I do have a question. I'm sorry. I just wanted to get that off my chest. I apologize. When thinking about coming off of the summer and what children went through this summer, and knowing that our wraparound services, our behaviorists, people who basically reach into them on the social-emotional level, we did have that planned out in our plan extensively. I'm just concerned now, it's something to like what Board Member Creji was alluding to, with we can't reach into the household in the same way. So basically, just wanted to speak to that part.
I will have that question responded to by Ms. Lori McKenna, who supervises our Student Support Services Division and our Pupil Personnel Services.
Thank you, Superintendent Adams. And realize the impact in reducing our socially-
Can you guys pin her up on the screen so she's big? So that we can all see her face? If you right-click on her in the team and pin her, I think we can get her larger. Is that possible? I'm sorry, Mr. Baker, I didn't realize you'd have to rise from your seat. Sorry, Lori, I'm sorry to-
No, no worries.
Yeah, there we go. There's a bigger Lori. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So we certainly recognize the impact of reducing our student support staff, our social workers, behavior specialists, and psychologists in this, and I'll use the same word, devastating state aid reduction that we have to face tonight and in the next few days. We have worked diligently this summer on putting together a solid socially-emotional learning plan with lessons and supports for our teachers to use within their classrooms. And we are providing professional development to them in the next coming weeks as well. And so while the staff, the PPS staff is being reduced, we are providing supports to our classroom teachers to provide that level of support that students may need as they re-enter into the buildings. And I just want to recognize Dr. Kanzoni Ball and her leadership in working with our student support staff, our social workers, behavior specialists, and psychologists in putting together a robust plan to support our students as they re-enter in the fall.
You could do that. Board Member Creji? Board Member Creji, did you have a question? No, you're good. Dr. Tatur?
So this question is regarding the pre-K enrollment. There's almost like a 45% drop in enrollment. What happened there? And since we've been one of the early providers, we don't get enough money as the other later, the people who signed on for pre-K afterwards do. But regardless, that's a significant amount of money per student. So how does that figure into this further budget loss?
Dr. Wilson Turner is available to speak to the pre-K.
Good evening. So the pre-K numbers reflected there are four-year-old numbers. They do not include our three-year-old numbers in that projection. But as we mentioned at the previous board meeting, we were looking at our enrollment at that time in light of the anticipated impact on the UPK funding and where we would go through and begin to work with our partners to reduce seats that had yet to be filled. Now, I'll remind the board that we do our lottery for pre-K in the spring. However, we register our pre-K students well into the school year through Bed-Stay, which is when a lot of our families will continue to register in particular areas of our city once the school year has started. And so this would typically be the time when we begin to continue to fill those seats. But in light of the reduction, we are already anticipating taking out 179 seats in order to make up the over $1 million reduction to UPK funding as a result of this 20% reduction.
Can you repeat that last part again?
I'm sorry, could you repeat yourself, Dr. Tatur? I didn't hear you.
Can you repeat that last part again? I missed what you said regarding to the funding.
So we had to reduce our UPK. We're anticipating a reduction to our UPK funding of 20%, just like with everything else, which equates to just over $1 million, $1.06 million. In order to close that gap, Ms. Haces had to work with our community partners to identify vacant seats that we would not be able to now fill in order to close that gap in funding.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up? I'm still trying to understand, Board Member Creji, you want to go ahead? And then if you don't ask my question, I-
It might be the question you're asking. And I just wanted to ask, this isn't a suggestion, but just a question. And it is, are we planning to run the program for 3Ks, the three-year-olds, this year? I wasn't quite sure based on what you said.
Yes, we are still planning to run the program for three-year-olds. The three-year-old numbers are not reflected in Mrs. Adams' screen. They just reflects the four-year-old numbers. There are over 200 three-year-old seats.
Thank you. So I think we're narrowing in on the math now. So last year, we had 976 pre-K students enrolled, according to these numbers. And 179 seats, we are going to intentionally not fill, right? Because, to achieve the savings, which would leave 797 if I just do the simple subtraction. So your expectation would be that, rather than the 559 that's showing, it would be more in the neighborhood of 80795, something like that.
When you add the three-year-old students in, correct?
I see. Okay, that's fine. I will, members of the community and members of the public who are here, I cannot tell you the complexity in calculating enrollment. I have spent much of the last five years becoming a rather expert on how the various different ways are that you calculate enrollment. You can find enrollment figures for the City School District of Albany all the way from roughly 8,000 all the way up to roughly 11,000. And everyone's like, "What does that mean?" And all of these numbers do mean something. They just mean different things depending on how you're counting people. Are they funded with pre-K? Are they funded with charter money? Are they funded with different strategies for special ed money? So there's different ways of counting enrollment. So these sort of discrepancies happen all the time and are perfectly normal. But in terms of this slide, we do need to update that 559 to be more like 795, to incorporate our 3K students, which will change that bottom 912 to something a little bit higher, which I'm not going to try and do that math in my head and make a fool of myself, but it will be a higher number, which will change the ratios at the bottom. Okay. Any other questions on pre-K, since we're kind of on pre-K? Otherwise, then I think Dr. Tatur was last. Board Member Mann, did you have a question on the slides nine through 14?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at slide number 10. And these cuts are going to decimate an entire workforce in a way that is just unprecedented. I'm looking at the numbers of individuals who are going to be impacted, members of APSU, and those members who are wraparound service members through APSTA. And it's devastating. So here's my question. When there is an opportunity to hire back, and I'm being hopeful, right? I don't know when that would be. But do the individuals that are impacted by these cuts, are they the automatic go-to?
So I'm going to refer that question to Mr. Petron in HR because there is a distinct process when, you know, reducing staff and then bringing them back. Mr. Petron?
Yep. Board Member Mann, it depends on the position. 99% of them, though, are covered by civil service, which means we do put them on an eligible list and recall them from that list back to that position. They have the opportunity to return to that position with whatever building we have at the time, or they have the opportunity to reject it. So generally, yes.
Do you need to follow up? If you can hold for, if it's a different question, let's let Mr. Elmanyawi have a turn. Is that okay? Mr. Elmanyawi?
I actually had a question about the pre-K numbers. So I know we have different service providers like ACAP and a few other spaces around the plaza and whatnot. Were those numbers, were these numbers, they account for all of those locations, correct?
Dr. Wilson Turner, I'll start. It has, this number has the four-year-olds, and it is comprehensive with wherever they're located. and it is comprehensive with wherever they're located. And so, the three-year-old number that we would have to add would incorporate that as well.
But the 976 on the prior year includes all pre-K students, regardless of where they are. But it is an astute question, because when you look at different kinds of reporting, that is a difference. Sometimes pre-K is reported, only pre-K in the building, our buildings, some only if it's a community-based organization, and some all. So, it is an astute question that does need to be asked, and thank you for asking.
Right. So, basically, what we're looking at is all pre-K four-year-old student spots, and it does not include the three-year-old pre-K program.
Correct, but it does include all community partners who provide four-year-old slots.
Correct. Thank you.
As well as pre-K students who are in our buildings, whether they're district-taught or pre-K community-based organization-taught, yes?
Correct.
There's three kinds of pre-Kers, actually, in our district, because we have the district-taught pre-K students, plus we have the CBOs onsite, plus we have the CBOs off-site. Anybody who would like an education on this later, see me after class, and I'm happy to give you the full rundown. Ms. Smith, you have now had a question on this side of the slide.
And I'm, sorry. Okay. I, I probably have several, but I'll just ask this one that I have. I was just wondering whether, around the medical accommodations from teachers, is there, is this pretty much the number of requests that we think we're going to have, or are we still awaiting additional requests from teachers for exemptions?
Mr. Petron?
It's hard to say. Over the last few days, we have seen an increase of requests coming through. So, I anticipate that we will be receiving more, but it is certainly a large number already.
And I only, again, ask because that, that, that could, again, impact what things look like down the road, possibly.
It could absolutely impact programming.
Yeah. Forward colleagues, can I just ask for a brief tech pause? How are we doing with technology? I'm getting insight from the outside world that perhaps the feed was down briefly. Are we back up? So, we're down right now? I'd like to propose a five-minute recess while we get the technology up. This is in a critical meeting, and it must be held fully in the public eye. So, we will take a five-minute recess to give Mr. Baker time to establish whatever's going on with the... So, it's 8:26. Why don't we check back in around 8:30, a couple minutes after, and then we'll see where we're at. All right, folks, I understand that we are back in business on the technology front, so if people can resume their assigned positions, we will get ourselves going. So, I'm wondering if we could just repeat that last question, because I think we were dark for that question. I see Mr. Baker holding his finger up. He's going to tell me when we can go. And I need to navigate back and forth, so I don't get blocked by Mr. Eloy. So, Mr. Baker, are we ready to go? All right. I got a thumbs up from Mr. Baker. So, I am trying to recall where we were. Were we, Mr. Elmanyawi had asked a question, but I think we went dark just before that. So, we're going to, like, do an instant replay. It was about with the callback list, I think.
That was my question about people being rehired.
I asked a question about pre-K numbers, and then Vicky was asking a question about medical exemptions.
Okay. So, let's start again with Vicky's question, because I think that was not heard by the outside world. And I believe that everything will be available on the recording, but regardless, let's do it again for people who want to listen to now. Ms. Smith, go again.
Thank you. Superintendent, my question has to do with the medical exemptions. Are we still receiving requests for exemptions now?
So, thank you, thank you very much, Member Vice President, Vice President Smith, in that Mr. Petron responded to the question that it's hard to say how many that we will get. We did see a significant increase from our last board meeting till now, and so we just, we're taking them as they come. We're evaluating them one by one. But, you know, it does have an impact on the delivery of in-person instruction.
Okay. So, my question for this, I, I always like, when I can, to echo back questions that we hear in public comment. So, we had two members of the music department come and speak really eloquently about the power of music for, towards education. And so, can you speak to whether in slides 7 through 14, the reductions associated with the already-planned reconfiguration of services, you anticipate any reductions in either music staff or music services?
So, at this juncture, we have not put any plans in place with regard to the program in and of itself. There may be situations where someone may end up bumping someone through the seniority process or something like that. But right now, we, we don't have a plan in place to reduce our music program. And I think, Mrs. Beckel, if there's anything to add to that, or, please feel free.
Superintendent, as you just said, no, no final decisions as we're looking at all aspects of the budget.
Anyone else with a, has everybody's gotten a first question on these slides? Anyone have a second question on these slides? Ms. Wilson?
My question is about the reduction, our decreasing enrollment, and, for lack of a better term, tug-of-war with charter schools, as many are expanding, and their funds come from our, well, public funds, more or less. And this sort of juxtaposition of the roles that we're sort of reducing to, are they proportional to our decreasing amount in student enrollment, or are they just, the deductions that we saw fit to, like, sort of bring us to where we should be at this moment?
I will ask that, Mr. Lesko, if you'll come and provide us with a little summary with regard to what we're seeing in terms of charter school enrollment and our enrollment.
I have no idea what the charter school enrollment numbers are like. I know, you know, when they're starting and, and those sorts of things, but I don't know what their enrollment has been like.
And I believe that report, when do we usually do that report with regard to the charter school numbers?
The, the first charter school report of a school year that we typically rely on is the October 1 report, and, but, and that, we have that information at the end of, end of October, right around November 1. So, that's typically the most accurate, just like we wait for the end of September to know what our enrollment is. That's typically the most accurate, the first most accurate snapshot of how many students are enrolling in the charter schools.
Ms. Smith happens to be rather of an expert in the charter school area, so I'm going to ask you to speak.
But I will not discuss charter schools. Actually, just slightly a different take on it. I, I know, I understand that there are charter schools whose enrollment, their enrollments are increasing, you know, just because that's, they've been approved to grow every year. My question is, I think that, it, we probably, that probably counts for some of this, but I'm interested in knowing, as we are having contacts with, contact with families around their choices, are we finding that indeed many are opting to go to non-public school, or are they in the area even? I was just kind of trying to get a sense, do we have some understanding of these numbers, you know, what, what is happening? Are people actually indeed here, or they, have they left? Are they going to some other school? Just curious.
So, anecdotally, we will know that they're maybe going to a different school, but we don't truly know until we get requests for records for where they enroll. And so, that has to do with our Bed-Stay reporting and those types of things, and so we won't have that information until later.
And so, I, you know, I should know that, because also, this is an unusual time, so many folks are making decisions rather late than, than normal, I would suspect, too. So, okay, thank you.
I'm just going to add on to that, this question of charter schools and charter payments and parent decision, that these, the number that I talked about with Ms. Roaring a few minutes ago, which is that $35 million, $5 to $7 million figure, assumed charter school enrollment grew slightly, because we made that assumption, assumption, we built that assumption into our budget, that we would lose 60 students to charter schools because we know that the charter schools are adding. If, in fact, a larger-than-normal number of children choose charters, that could be even more, that 20% could be even more than what we already talked about, because our charter payment is based very specifically on the number of charter students. So, if, in fact, the state continues what we understand to be the case right now, which is that the charter schools are getting 100% of their payment, while we're getting 80% of our payment, that would be a further increase, the devastation of the impact of that on our district. Sorry, I got, lost my thread on charter schools, but it was sort of an important point. Anyone else with a second question? Did you get your question answered?
Well, the question was really framing it around the fact that if we're seeing a decrease in our enrollment, then that was sort of dictating where we had to make reductions to, and I was wondering if it was proportional to that. But thank you.
So, your question is, are, are our staffing reductions in proportion to our enrollment reductions? Okay. I don't know if you want to speak to that in some overall way, Superintendent?
We wouldn't be able to make those comparisons until after we know the withdrawal codes of students.
Okay. Anyone else with a second question on these slides? Dr. Titor?
I'm sure you guys are still working on the positions and whatever across the district. I just want to make a comment that I'm hoping that the cuts are equitable across all the buildings, because some buildings do need more support than others.
So, I believe most of these reductions are secondary reductions based on the 7-12 model, and so, by definition, much of them is happening at Albany High, but between the middle schools, they would all be treated, whether you want to call it equitably or not, I don't know, but equally, in that all 7 to 12 students would be 100% virtual. To me, that goes back to, I think, Ms. Wilson's original question, which is, what services do we anticipate being able to provide, to provide sufficient support for our children who need additional support? So... Board Member Mann, another question? No?
It was already answered, thank you.
Board Member Elmanyawi?
So, before I start losing my thread here, I'm sorry, give me a moment.
You can pass when we can continue.
Can I pass for just two seconds until...
Absolutely. Let it come back, and then we'll go back to you. Ms. Smith, do you have another question on these slides?
I do, but I'm just mulling it over. Could I come back as well?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Elmanyawi, that would be a perfect amount of time to let you get your mind back around it. Perfect. Go ahead.
So, I just want to know that our district is going to have a plan in the case that we need to move to an all-virtual scenario later on, maybe in the wintertime or whatever it is. It is really concerning that this is just one of the first look-back periods, because I get the feeling that we're probably going to be in for more. And I think we also need to be prepared for that, and we need to be cognizant that maybe we should make that future decision now, because the time that we're going to be spending between now and the next cut, we're going to be spending money unnecessarily that we don't actually have. So...
So, Mr. Elmanyawi, you could be asking one of two possible questions, and I want to clarify which you're asking. You could be asking, do we have a plan for if we start in-person instruction at the elementary level, what will happen if we have a, something happened in the middle of the school year that requires us to, to switch? Do we have a plan for that? Or, you could be asking, ought we to very seriously consider going 100% virtual right now, and make sure we have 100% virtual plan to start the school year? That, my friend, is slide 15. So, if you have, if question, if you're asking question two, I want to hold it for slide 15. If you're asking question one, which is, do we have a plan to convert from in-person to virtual, and what would that look like? I think that's a good question for slides 9 through 14. So...
I will go with my first question, my first iteration of that question.
You want to go with that iteration? Okay. So, Superintendent, can you talk to us a little bit about the plan for what happens if a school has to close, if a room has to close, if the district has to close suddenly, and we have in-person students?
So, I will start with that response, and then I will ask that Dr. Wilson Turner speak to elementary, and Ms. McKenna can speak to sixth grade. But, as you know, 7 through 12 would already be in a virtual environment. So, yes, part of our reopening plan in and of itself, we had to establish what that process would be in order to make sure that we have computers for our students, that we have hotspots for our students, that we continue to feed our students, be it, you know, if we go all virtual, very similarly to last year, where we had to make sure that we were feeding our students each day. With regard to the instructional program, we have made some changes with regard to the rigor and accountability. And so, I will turn that time over to Dr. Wilson Turner, to Ms. McKenna, and to Mrs. Beckel.
So, in our reopening plans, we planned all along for the need for either a temporary closure or an extended closure, and how we would move our students from in-person to virtual. Our intent in getting our students in for as long as we could was to train them as well as we could to continue to use the Google platform, Google classroom platform, as well as our new Seesaw platform, which we began training teachers in this week. And so, even in our in-person model, we were scheduled to have students continue to utilize the technology that they would need in the event of a short-term closure, and to have the resources that they would need to go home with in the event of a short-term or long-term closure.
And just one follow-up question, which came to us in an email. If that were to happen for elementary students, they would stay with their same cohort, right? Their teacher and their cohort of students would stay the same. So, if you were virtual originally, you're going to stay virtual with your virtual teacher. If you're an in-person student, you're going to stay with your in-person teacher. They're just going to convert to a virtual teacher. Is that the basic idea?
That is correct. In the event that we closed, we had closed everything, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did, did you get that part of your question answered? Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Smith, you were working on a question. You were mulling something. Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I'm not, I think this is just really probably more of a comment, and it hit me. It's at the bottom of slide 14, and I heard it before, but I'm looking at the numbers again. So, actually, Superintendent, if I might, I think what we have done, we've, we're focused on that 20% reduction in our foundation aid, yes. We are worried that it could get to affect all of the aid we get, right? So, right now, we are, let's see, what's the word?
Yeah, I think what you're pointing out is that if we get the 20% aid...
Yeah.
Cut, 20% aid reduction, only on foundation aid, these cuts are sufficient.
Yeah.
If the 20% aid, 20% reduction, in fact, impacts all aids, these cuts are not sufficient and would require additional, another round of cuts, which would come later in the year.
Right. And actually, I thought that's where Mr. Elmanyawi was, was headed with, with his question, or his comments, yeah.
Absolutely, that's a nice point.
It was just something that made, I know it's been said before, but it just kind of hit me a little differently just a minute ago.
Yeah, I really appreciate your pointing that out, because I don't think we really express that clearly enough, that this 16.1 is less than 16.5, right? And also, quite a bit less than 23.2. So, in a worst-case scenario, we might have quite a bit left to go. Anybody have a follow-up question on that mathy part? No? Okay. Anybody have another question on slides 8 through 14? Board Member Creji, you passed once, so you get the break.
I did. It occurred to me that my next question probably fits in best with these slides. I know we had several public commentators that, that expressed concern that we're using a 7:50 start time and not an 8:30 or later start time. And I just wondered, is there any cost savings in having the earlier start time? If we were to move to 8:30 or 9 o'clock, would that, would that incur any additional expenses on our part?
I know that Mrs. Beckel is looking into that, and Mrs. Beckel, if you would like, if you would care to respond?
That would involve a change in times for teachers and would have to be negotiated. But we were really following the regular school day, as has always been established, at 7:50 to 2:50 p.m.
I'm sorry. Can I ask a follow-up about that? Because we had originally planned to start at 9:30 and to do the five-days-over-10-days model.
Yes, that's correct.
So, what I'm trying to understand, because you spoke to us last week and said, even in this 7 to 12 virtual, we, you know, the high school plan was designed to be able to go virtual and non-virtual, is the only thing that's changed about the plan, the start time, or are we reverting to the standard schedule?
As, as we looked closer to, at the schedule in a virtual environment and... As, as we looked closer to, at the schedule in a virtual environment and with the completely virtual environment, what we saw is that we wanted, we needed to balance the time between the synchronous and asynchronous learning, and we were concerned about planting the common planning time and the planning time outside of the school day. The amount of time that we needed in the original model for supervision of kids when they were coming onsite was something that we had to have from the teachers, and once we were no longer coming onsite and we didn't have that need for supervision, we needed to reallocate that time in a different way. And when we looked at it, we decided that we would go back to that 1 through 9 schedule, that period 1 through 9 schedule. However, having said that, we are really committed to not having kids sit in front of a computer for five or six hours a day. So we are balancing the schedule with synchronous and asynchronous live and not-live learning so that students are not sitting in front of a computer for that entire school day.
And Ms. McKenna, do you have something to add, please?
Yeah, so the only thing I would, I would add is that we do have some flexibility in the start and end time for our students. In the teacher's contract, the start and end time can be between 7:30 and 4:00. So we do have some flexibility in when we can bring kids in and when we can bring teachers in. And so I will absolutely work with Ms. Commerford and Ms. Beckel to review the start and end time for our high school students, and then submit a recommendation to Superintendent Adams.
Board Member Creche, did you want to follow up on that point?
A follow-up is, can we have that common planning time for teachers be shifted to the beginning of the day in order to help make that happen?
Those are things that we would have to look into.
So I just want to echo Board Member Creche's commentary on this, that we've all known for a long time that there was significant research around a later start time and that we were constrained by a variety of details, as well as by the fact that we had many, many priorities to handle in not really investigating that too thoroughly and thinking through all of the implications, but many of the implications seem to be falling away with the virtual model. So I would like to keep it alive as long as we can, that we would start high school later if we can without impacting our fiscal situation in any meaningful way, because that is, of course, very important also. Dr. Titor, then Mr. Elmenyawi, and then we'll go on after that.
And part of the reason I thought we started first thing in the morning was because athletics used to be, that the tournaments and stuff used to start soon, and so you needed that time to get to the place, whatever. All that has changed now. So if we could shift it to a later time, that'd be great. My question is actually going to be on about Slide 14, where we talk about athletics. I'd like to hear more about, because last time when we were in the budget development, we had a whole slew of parents talk about music programs and athletics. And I want to hear what the plans are for athletics. And on that same line, they also talk about field trips, and I'm hoping that we can at least do virtual field trips and keep some sort of, some semblance of those things for our kids.
And if you could just talk about clubs at the same time as athletics? I know clubs and other sorts of activities are kind of comparable to athletics in the sense that they're done after the school day.
So I do need to adjust that to have clubs and activities on that line, because they kind of go hand-in-hand. We are looking at what are the cost implications if we were to reduce athletics at this point? We know that there, at a larger scale within our region, different school, different districts are making different decisions about whether they are delaying until January, or whether they're going to practice, or whether they're going to do inner murals. And so we are looking at all of those options, but we are looking at what a reduction would be to roughly 40% of the budget for athletics. And so what that specifically looks like, we don't know. As you know, that we do have guidelines with regard to what some of the low-risk contact sports are, some of the high-risk contact sports are, but based on our funding and what those reductions look like and where those impacts may be, if there are four sports that are considered low risk, we may only be able to participate in two. But we don't have those answers yet, because we are working with Ashley Chaplin, our athletic director. We're working with regard to what does that look like? With regard to clubs and activities, those are, we are looking at what types of clubs, I'm going to back up a little bit on clubs and activities. One of the things that we did hear from our students was that they, they liked the idea of being able to still participate in clubs, even though it may be virtually. So that comes with a cost. And so we have to look at, what are some of those clubs that may be offered virtually that our students would be interested in doing and benefit from? But at the same time, that may be something that we may not be able to afford right now. So we have to really look at that very carefully as well. And field trips, yes, we did talk before about having virtual field trips when this came up before, and we're still looking into that. And there are so many, I will say, an easier lift are the virtual field trips, more so than athletics, clubs, and activities, because there are all of the museums in town, they offer the virtual experience for schools to participate in, even those that are not here locally, some that are, you know, national, you can go to virtually. And so we're looking at what, what would we need to do to make sure that our students can have those experiences?
Thank you.
Anyone else on a question on our chunk two, which is Slides nine through 14? Mr. Elmenyawi?
So actually, I wanted to hop on that late-arrival bandwagon. I think right now is a very good time to do what we can to make that happen, that 9:00 a.m. arrival happen, or 9:30 a.m. arrival happen. I recall being a high school student as well, so that would have been great. The next question actually is something that I've been meaning to ask, specifically regarding the high school switch to all virtual. And I know that we talk about students that need additional attention and assistance a lot, but not necessarily ones that need to be challenged more often. I know teachers being present gives them the opportunity to say, hey, this person is already well-versed in whatever it is that we're studying, I'm going to push him a little bit more, or push her a little bit more. How are we going to do that with the online environment with 7 through 12 now?
I'm going to give a broad-based answer, because we are still looking at professional development opportunities as to how do we raise the level of rigor? And I know that our instructional supervisors are working with, with Ms. Beckel, and with Laura McKenna, and with Dr. Wilson Turner across the board as to how we will do that.
If it's something as simple as even providing additional resources to those students, whether it's access to like LexisNexis database, or articles, or whatever it might be, just want to get us thinking about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just add on to that, I actually, I found the high school model so compelling. I really, at first, you know, I have a high school student, entering high school student myself, and at first I was a little bit disappointed with, you know, 100% virtual, which is what it was even if you were in the building, right? Even before the 100% virtual, it was 100% virtual instruction. And at first, I was disappointed by that. But the deeper I understood, more deeply I understood the plan, the more I liked it, and the more I liked the inquiry-based model, the more time between classes, the opportunity for office hours, for the, exactly what Mr. Elmenyawi is talking about in terms of kids who need additional support, having access to teachers during that cell period at the beginning. And I guess I would like to hear a little bit more, and it doesn't have to be today, although I know that, you know, school is opening and schedules need to be printed, but I would like to understand how we're going to still get some of those benefits that we had anticipated getting, which I thought were really compelling. Like, I was really convinced that this was going to be a great experience for the students who, for the students who had the technology and could participate, that it would be a really great experience. And I'm saddened that we are going to be 100% virtual, sort of mimic of the regular school, and lose perhaps some of those other benefits to it. Although, again, I trust the cabinet, and I trust the reopening team that they've thought that through, I guess I just need to understand a little bit more, because I had no idea that that change was coming.
If we could provide that in an SVU, would that be okay?
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else on chunk two, additional questions? Or are we ready to move on to Slide 15, which is really, you know, a very large and topic that deserves a robust conversation of its own? Okay. Who would like to start on Slide 15? Ms. Mann, Board Member Mann?
So, so given the additional challenges that are bulleted out, next steps, the first thing it says is examine increasing the virtual instructional model. Can we talk about that a little bit? What does that mean?
So it would mean that we would have to look at maybe going to 4th and 5th grade that would go virtual. Some of the other districts around us have gone as low as 3rd grade going virtual, and keeping the kindergarten, will pre-K, kinder, first, second grade onsite. So we would have different models that we would be able to look at.
Follow-up? And so in terms of next steps, would that be considered a part of this round in order to make up the, in order to deal with the deficit?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
And I just want to remind folks about the additional challenges on this slide. And one of the real problems here is just a bad confluence, as I understand it, right? Under a normal year, if you have a budget reduction, you increase class sizes. That's what you do, right? If you don't have enough money to pay for staff, you have fewer staff members, which means you have more kids per class. That is not an option in in-person education, right? We can only fit as many kids in the room as fit in the room safely. If they don't fit, we cannot make the class sizes larger. So adding class size, increasing class size in in-person is simply not a solution as it would normally be. And so that really puts us, when we're talking about having fewer teachers, which is what medical accommodations and expanded FMLA childcare means, it means fewer teachers, we can't just expand class sizes. That, that just doesn't work, because there's no room in the room. And even if we could expand by adding kids into a different room, we don't have money to pay the sub, right? Because that would be the other thing that you could do if you didn't have a teacher, because the teacher was ill or unavailable, is you would hire a sub or a temporary sub. But remember, you're still paying that teacher. That teacher is still on the payroll, and we are $20 million short. So one, one thing that is clearly not an option is for us to simply add a substitute teacher to teach a class that would otherwise be taught by a teacher who, for whatever their personal medical reason is, can, or medical or family reason is, cannot be in the building. So it's just a very difficult triangle to figure out how you can get around, and that's why, when you start thinking about what the real options are, it becomes, well, more kids not in the building somehow. Did I do justice to that?
Absolutely. Very nice.
Okay. Let's go, Dr. Titor, and then Board Member Creche, and now we're going in the opposite order, so I apologize if I forget anyone.
This is following what Dr. Damres was talking about. If I understood clearly, you said 4th and 5th grade, but 6th grade also, right, would go virtual?
Yes. And I was just trying to give an example that we would have to adjust along the way.
Now, when you, when you go, when you make those plans, are you also thinking of a blended model where it's not 100% virtual, but it's more like three days a week or something like that? Because I think the younger kids still need to camp more of that interaction.
So the challenge is still ensuring that any form of in-person, you're still looking to see if you have staff to cover the class, because that's really what it boils down to, that when, and you have to understand, this is one of the things that, and Dr. Wilson Turner, if I don't get it right, just chime right in. If I have an elementary classroom where normally there may be 24 students in a classroom, this is a model that we've been talking about, I can't have 24 students in the classroom because of social distancing. So we split them in half, and now it's 12 and 12 with social distancing. If I don't have another teacher or supervisor to watch, or teach, or instruct that other half of the class, that's where the conflict happens. That's where the disconnect is. Dr. Wilson Turner?
That is correct. By virtue of cutting our class sizes in half to support social distancing, we need double the staff to do the work.
Board Member Creche?
My question, and it's, it's less of a suggestion and more simply a brainstorming idea, is do we know if there would be any cost reductions associated with, I know there are districts that still, still have half-day kindergarten. Have we thought about, and I know whether we would do that across the board, or simply offer it as an alternative for families that do have a stay-at-home parent. Could we do, could we think about having morning and afternoon kindergartens, or could we even have, say, morning and half-day pre-K programs and save staff that way? And could we even think about eliminating the 3K programs, or would the loss of money? I know we put a lot of our general fund money into the pre-K, so that's why I'm wondering if, even if we were to lose some funding by going to a half-day program, if there'd be any savings?
Dr. Wilson Turner?
So I'm going to speak out of my lane in terms of the maintenance requirement in between classes that would need to happen for a half-day program, and how that would challenge the amount of time that students would be able to actually be in session. However, I do want to clarify that the majority of our pre-K is funded through the universal pre-K funding source. It is not coming primarily from the general fund. Our general fund, and this, I'm glad you brought this up, because this is something Ann tried to clarify again at the last meeting, our general fund picks up two pre-K classrooms, technically, at Montessori because of the multi-age piece of it, and our pre-K classroom over at Delaware because of certification requirements, which is a significant portion of what the contribution for pre-K is in our general fund budget. So we don't, cutting pre-K doesn't benefit us in this budget scenario, because it's a completely different funding source. And, you know, the half-day model, as I said, in addition to the maintenance challenges, could be, you know, a host of other challenges, and it's not a model that we've run in the past, and it's one that we would want to, if we're going to bring our students in person, we of course want to be able to do the most robust model that we possibly could. But as I've said to Mrs. Adams throughout this entire process, my principals and my elementary entry team have built 100 plans. And so we've looked at 100 different models of how, how we get to bring students onsite, because we understand how important it is, and have turned ourselves inside out doing this. And these numbers make it very challenging to do so, and to do so in the way that we have to do it in these circumstances.
I understand. Thanks so much for explaining that. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you again, and I want to ask this question that I asked before, but it was before the new reality of today, where we were beset with further reductions and the reality that we may have to expand to lower grades to go virtual. The question remains that what about families who are not home, or there's an absent parent, or not childcare? Are there still the same exemptions that we spoke about before for attending virtually?
For our, you mean for our employees with the expansion of FMLA?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I meant for families in the district.
So one of the things that we have been working through with Boys and Girls Clubs and, and looking at the why, what are those components for childcare and after-school care or before-school care? And they are limited in their resources as well. And so the unfortunate answer right now is, we don't have an answer.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I wanted to, this is sort of, I think, following up on Ms. Mann's question or comment about the virtual instruction model, the, increasing that model. Where you have mandated and non-mandated services, is that suggesting that we would, I hate this word, prioritize the student groups that would be coming into the building in person? And would that, I don't know whether that would also include our E&amp;L population, I know it includes our special education students, would it also include students who are Would it also include students who are at risk? So I just wanted to ask that question.
I'm going to say that any mandated program is just that. We really don't have, there's no option when it's a mandated program. What would change would be the delivery of the service. So let's go back to the spring, when it was full virtual, including special education. Then, just like with our medical careers and hospitals and clinics, they had to develop a way to do tele-services and tele-therapy and things like that. So there would have to be some way in which those services would be delivered. May not be the traditional sense. It may be something very different. But if it's a mandated service or mandated program, we would have to, we would have to figure that out.
Sorry, just a follow-up. So it isn't about an in-person versus all virtual. It's about making sure that services that are mandated are provided.
That is correct.
Okay.
So I know that the answer to this is in some point, in some ways, dependent on when we get to the end of the teachers requesting medical accommodations and FMLA accommodations, because until that happens, we don't even really know fully what teachers will be available to us. But when I think about the first principles of who we are as a community and who we are as a board, it's always about equity, and it's always about delivering services to the students who need it the most. So as I think about the concept of going full virtual, either, worst-case scenario, full, full virtual, like we just become a full virtual district, as I know that some districts have been talking about, or if we pick a year, fourth grade, fifth grade, whatever year, third grade, that should free up some money, right? That's the theory, right? Reducing the transportation costs, reducing the maintenance costs. The theory is it should free up some money. And there should be some teachers who are available to us to, to teach in-person. And so what I'm wondering is if we can start thinking very creatively about how we can distribute that money and that very scarce resource, it sounds like it's going to be of in-person education, in a way that is most equitable. I don't have a great plan for how to do that. The things that are in my mind are things like, as several people have mentioned, prioritizing our newcomers in our ENLs, prioritizing our tier-three instruction kids, prioritizing our specialized self-contained classroom, and also, possibly very radical idea, prioritizing families who self-identify as deeply in need as essential workers with no access to childcare. So in my dream, we have, we know how many teachers we have at first grade. Let's say there's 20 first-grade teachers across the district. That allows us to provide, because they can only teach nine kids each, let's tell it 10, because I can do the math easy, 200 first graders, that's a third of our first graders. Can we offer an opportunity for families to self-select as being the most in need of those limited services? And clearly sending a message to other families, if you don't need it, please don't choose it, because other families really need it. And I realize that that would still require, there would be a whole new plan, a whole new way of thinking about it. It's an extraordinary lift I'm asking for, so I'm certainly not asking you to say, yeah, that's a great idea, let's do it. But I, I do think that that's consistent with our philosophy of how can we do something for the families and the children who need it the most? So that is my question. I don't know if you want to respond in any way, or have anything to stand up?
My response would be that if we were at the point where we were completely virtual, we would have to prioritize our most vulnerable students. And if that meant that in prioritizing those students, that we would look at in-person learning, then we would have to look at, what are those mandated pieces that we would have to do? How would we deliver those services? And then, do we have the teachers to provide that education?
And is there any regulation or expectation that's solid about when teachers need to be providing this detail to us? I mean, obviously, things happen in people's lives, right? Somebody might fall ill tomorrow and not know today. So, you know, that, that I understand. But in terms of people who have, is there some deadline, for lack of a better word? Because it's very, very difficult to plan when we don't know when those are going to keep increasing.
Mr. Petron. I will defer to you.
There really isn't. So the, the law employees are gaining access to right now is the Americans with Disabilities Act. This is a reasonable accommodation process related to that, which is, you know, a federal law we need to follow. Our hope is that, we spoke to employees as part of the plan, they learned about what our reopening is going to look like, so they had the opportunity to consider and see if their health conditions would prevent them from coming back. So I, I would hope that we've gotten a good portion of them, and slowly it will trickle down. But I think, you know, as we've been watching requests come in, we just are thinking, well, what if this continues? The exact same things you were getting at, President Savage.
So even if you tried to do my slightly out-of-the-box crazy idea, you'd need to plan for 80%, right? You'd need to have a 20% overage of in-person instructors in case one of the in-person instructors fell ill or was unavailable, because you'd still need a sub to fill in. It's not easy. Okay. Let's see. We've started at that end, so let's start at that end again. Ms. Elmenyawi?
So do we have any idea of when we're going to actually have a greater understanding if it's going to be 16.5 million or 23 million?
No, we do not have an idea as to when that is coming, unless Ms. Roaring, unless you've heard some additional information.
Unfortunately, at this time, we don't have any clarity on that. What we know is that the practice that has started so far is 20% across the board, which would lead to that $23 million number, rather than 20% on Foundation A that was at that $16 million number.
Right. So I would certainly look at the $23 million number as the starting point. That's how I would look at it. I mean, obviously, we should have some kind of idea of what we would do if it's only 16.5, but it's unlikely to be, in my opinion.
Board Member Mann, did you have a question this round, or no?
It's also, it's more of a comment. So I know that we're, we're waiting to see, we've seen, HR has seen an increase in requests for medical accommodations, right? And so instead of being reactive, can we be proactive? You know, instead of waiting to see how many more are coming in, can we just say, you know what? This is what we have to do, and just rip a Band-Aid off and make that decision? Like, sixth grade is going to be virtual. Fifth grade is going to be virtual, whatever it is, which it all is not good.
If I understand the situation correctly, and I'm going to make sure the superintendent is listening, the worst-case scenario is if we do what you're describing, the only way to completely protect the district from a sudden change is 100% full virtual, make that decision right away. That's the rip the Band-Aid off approach. So I see that there's, so the question was, you know, how do we protect ourselves against, you know, things changing on us further? And that is the rip the Band-Aid off approach, is 100% full virtual, make the decision today. Superintendent Adams, did you want to comment on that?
I'm going to turn it over to Paula Loi.
No, I mean, from a personnel standpoint, you really don't have any control over, over requests for accommodations coming in. The other big line of inquiry you're ultimately going to get, which you also have no control over, which is going to be a very fluid chain reaction type of situation, is if schools are closing, presumably your teachers are individuals who have children themselves. Now their schools are closed, their children are now forced back into the home because there's no in-person instruction option for them, which means they might now be seeking to avail themselves of emergency medical family leave, which means now that's more of your teachers are going to qualify for that, and they, and two, are also not going to be back in the home. So it's a very slippery slope that, that, you know, the, the only way I think you can prepare for it is to try to build in some sort of buffer, but when you're running as lean as you're running, that's really not an option.
Everybody, keep breathing, because this is the reality, right? We, what did I say, a convocation? I said, this is not the year we wanted it to be. It's not the year we expected it to be, but it is the year it will be. And that is where we're at. Ms. Elmenyawi, you already had a question. I'm going to come down this way. Dr. Tatur?
I mean, I know we're not voting on it today. We're going to vote on it Tuesday, possibly. How soon before Tuesday would we possibly have more granularity in numbers?
I cannot answer, I cannot answer that with certainty, because we will be working around the clock.
I think the real heart of the question is, and it's just, the unknown and the uncertainty is extraordinarily difficult. But the reality is, it's not a question of when the board's going to know, or when the board meeting is going to be, it's going to be when our parents are going to know, right? I mean, we are, students are going to do virtual orientation starting on the ninth. Is that still reasonable, given what we know today? Are we still going to do virtual? Or is there the potential for, you know, radical changes between now and then that sort of get us in the way of that, that make doing that orientation perhaps not a sensible choice?
We will be able to provide as detailed information. That's what we are preparing for Tuesday. And that way, we would put you in a position to be able to assist with some decision-making.
Okay. Board Member Creji, did you have another question or a comment? Ms. Wilson?
My question is to examine further the medical accommodations. It's kind of a two-part question. First is, when you are opting into that, are you opting into less pay or reduce or reduction in your pay? And the second part is, is there any sort of thing that precludes us from asking people who have, who can't come into the building to then become virtual teachers, to swap them out for people who can? Or is that also something that's prohibited?
Okay. Sorry about that. So I can speak to kind of the general aspects of your question. And while I'm sure Mr. Petron might be able to speak more to your Albany specifics, with respect to accommodations, that's a request that's being made because an individual has a disability. Our duty to accommodate them falls under the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act. The accommodations we are providing are done so solely so that we can keep that individual employed and working. So there should be no diminution in salary or benefits for those individuals, because they're still there generally performing the essential functions of their job. You could have instances where individuals, there are times when a leave of absence from work can be a reasonable accommodation. We're not really seeing it here with respect to COVID because of the uncertainties of the, the virus and what that means. There's really no way to say, yeah, a month out is reasonable, but because we have no clue what COVID is going to look like a month from now, or six months from now, or a year from now. Okay? So for those folks that are just getting accommodated for their disabilities, there shouldn't be any issue. Where they will see, receive a diminution in pay is if they are subject to a quarantine because they themselves have gotten sick, or more often because of a precautionary measure that's being taken under the state quarantines, like traveling in from a restricted state, or the Department of Health mandating, excuse me, that individuals become quarantined because they've been exposed to someone who had COVID. Those individuals are covered under various federal leaves or state leaves that were enacted in response to the COVID pandemic. In, on some occasions, they can supplement their pay, like to the extent that they're actually sick, with sick leave accruals that they may already have contractually. And of course, any employee who's actually sick is entitled to their contractual accruals that have been negotiated, or personal leave that's been negotiated. I think actually in Albany, we just have PTO for everyone, so they would be able to draw that down.
Mr. Petron, did you want to add?
Yeah, I think just adding to the question about, you know, are we able to utilize our resources in the most efficient way, looking at virtual teachers and onsite teachers and, and shuffling staff accordingly? We absolutely are doing that. And, you know, I'm partnering with the curriculum and instruction side of the house to determine what our scheduling plans look like, having an idea of who we may have on needing an accommodation, and also those who may be onsite, and trying to make sure we get the, the most utility out of having staff in, in particular positions.
And we do also have the scenario that if, which is not part of this reasonable accommodation, but similarly, if a teacher or their spouse or their child were to be exposed to COVID or something of that nature, we could easily pivot to someone, like we have that contingency also built in. Being able to pivot to utilizing someone else in their absence?
I think you're, I think that the question, the answer is, is standard sub, sub replacements. And I believe you guys reported last time that you had a sub list that was relatively robust, given the number of in-person teachers that we thought we were going to need. Does that, does that answer your question? Okay. Anyone else have a question or comment? Mr. Elmenyawi?
It was actually a question regarding the medical scenario, the medical leave. Have we opened, I mean, I understand you could put a request in at any time, but have we encouraged to get as, as many requests as we possibly can as soon as we can?
Yes, we have encouraged people to submit their paperwork. There's documentation that's required. There's a criteria that we go through. Each one of those are handled individually with our attorneys as well as with HR.
As I recall, the staff was surveyed very early, around the same time that parents were surveyed, not with the enrollment choice form, but remember, there was a survey before that that was kind of like, hey, what do you think? You think you're going to be in-person, or you think you're going to be? The staff got a question, because I remember looking at the staff survey that said, do you anticipate needing an accommodation? And so they had that information quite a time ago. It's just unfortunately, the reality of people needing an accommodation proves to be a larger number than the teachers anticipated when they submitted that survey. We're all, that is not a critique of folks who entered the survey wrong. We're all learning. We're all evolving. Things are changing all the time. It is a pandemic and a worldwide recession. People answer a survey, and then they have to go back and, and relook at their real situation. And that is what we all should be doing in this environment, but it is creating a complex situation for us.
I guess, part of my question is, have we seen the rise in, in claims, so to speak, kind of level off? Or, or are we still seeing an influx?
Mr. Petron?
I would say we saw a recent rise. I would need beginning of next week to really see if it's leveling off.
Thank you for asking that question. It's a good question. Okay. I think we have talked quite a bit about the possible scenarios. We've talked quite a bit about the things that we hold true as a philosophy, right? Which is the board's role, is to say, like, what's important to us as a community? And we've talked quite a lot about that, protecting our most vulnerable students, protecting our most vulnerable families, and doing our very best to create a predictable situation for families, right? I think that's, that's the key takeaway. In terms of next steps, we know we're coming together on Tuesday, which seems sort of a long time, but I remind everyone that technically, all of the poor people that are, you know, on the other side of these cameras are supposed to be closed, right? The district is actually closed Friday and Monday, although it's my impression that no one in cabinet has taken an actual vacation day. We're almost no vacation days for some time now, so I would be shocked if there wasn't a lot of work happening over this four-day weekend. But there are no business days between now and Tuesday. So I think we will look to the superintendent come the end of the weekend to see if Tuesday is a good idea, right? We need to have something to, there needs to be sufficient additional content to discuss. That said, we are all, as parents, expecting there to be virtual orientations starting on Wednesday, the ninth. So one way or the other, something has to give there. So, Dr. Tatur, you have your hand up. And so we're going to try and bring to a close item 15, and then I know we had the last thing, which was specific questions. Dr. Tatur?
Quick question for Mr. Baker. Do you have any update on the delivery of the Chromebooks? I know you've ordered them.
At this time, no substantive update. I will say that no news is good news under this scenario, because any update you do get typically means a further delay or back order log.
So follow up on that, because I actually, I just want to make sure we're done with slide 15, because you're actually pushing into the next topic, which is just like these reopening, little loose threads on reopening. But are we done talking about slide 15? Anybody have anything else that they want the superintendent and the staff to have in their mind as they're reviewing these options between now and Tuesday? Okay. Then back to Chromebooks. I think the, the big challenge that people are in the community, the parent community are have in their mind as they're reviewing these options between now and Tuesday? Okay. Then back to Chromebooks. I think the big challenge that people are in the community, the parent community are trying to figure out is, we know the Chromebooks are coming, we know they're coming, and we can't wait for them to come, but meanwhile, there's supposed to be virtual orientation on Wednesday, and the Chromebooks aren't in people's hands, and they're clearly not going to be in people's hands between now and Wednesday. So I think people are looking for clarity on whether that orientation is going to be provided a second time, whether it's going to be accessible, you know, through some other mechanism, like how are we going to orient the kids who, for whatever reason, don't have access to the technology to log into the virtual orientation? That feels like where the rubber is hitting the road for folks.
So I will start with, so we have committed to one per household, and so the way that the orientations are set up, you have the computers, one per household, and then, if I'm not mistaken, they are recorded? Are the orientations recorded?
Yes.
Yeah. And so by them being recorded, they could be viewed at a different time?
Okay, that's very, very helpful. And do we, I know that in the spring, and I think you've answered this question before, and I apologize for asking the same question a second time, but I know in the spring, we made like a tremendous effort to do outreach and call every single household and say, do you have, do you need, how can we make sure you have connectivity and a Chromebook for your family? Have we revisited that for the students that are enrolled this year? Do we know for sure that we have met the hotspot need and the one-per-family Chromebook need for families who've requested it? And if a parent thinks they should have gotten that answer, how, like, what are they supposed to do if they really want that? If they need a Chromebook, one per family, we understand, but they don't have it? What is it that they're supposed to have done or do?
So to close the year, we had decentralized our approach to deployment of devices, and we have begun the year in the same fashion. So at this point in time, each local building has a discretionary supply of Chromebooks, chargers, and some other ancillary peripherals to support that, such that they can meet the need that becomes identified. It's important to also understand that since the distribution last year, we did not take back any devices other than from graduating seniors who had no other district students in the household. So in my mind, when we closed the year, we were at a one-per-household sufficient level of access, and we have focused on this year, supporting the buildings and identifying newly enrolled families, and also those who were not contacted perhaps last year or fell out of contact. So it's been a focused effort, decentralized focused effort that's been building based. So to answer your question simply, anyone who is at this point in time should be reaching out directly to that building principal.
Okay, so anyone who doesn't, who thinks that, who needs a Chromebook has zero Chromebooks in their households, right? Because if you have five kids in your family, let's not say five, that's too many, let's say two kids in your family, or three kids in your family, at most, you should expect right now to have one district-owned Chromebook. And if you need one and you don't have one, you should call one of your children's principals, or all three of your children's principals, and say, hey, we really need a Chromebook, and we're stuck. And I assume that there's some central effort so that the principals, if they're out of Chromebooks, can reach out to the district and say, hey, wait a minute, you told everybody to call me, but I already gave away all my Chromebooks, but maybe there's some Chromebooks over at this other school, or some modification like that.
Correct. It's a spoken hub model. We are the spoke centrally. We are responsible for providing that sufficient supply to every building. That's correct.
Okay. So if people at home, call your principal, as is always actually the best advice, always call your principal. And the principals may not answer the phone, but leave a voicemail or send an email, and they will get back to you. And it should still be possible, we believe, to have a Chromebook, one Chromebook per household for any household that is in need. Families who are not in need, I ask you to please think very carefully about whether you really need a Chromebook for this first couple of weeks, because if you have some other device that allows you to connect to the internet, and you can make do with that during this period, there are families who do not have any device and really desperately need it. Mr. Baker would like the floor again. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Savage. What we just spoke about, the model we just described, also is in place for hotspots, access, broadband access as well.
Okay. So if you either don't have a Chromebook, a district-owned Chromebook, or if you do not have internet access in your household because you don't have internet access and you don't live in a building, or a place where you can access in your building public Wi-Fi or community Wi-Fi, that is another resource that the district believes we have enough to make sure that every household that needs a hotspot has one, and you should, again, contact your principal. If that proves to not be enough need, we will move heaven and earth to get what we need so that we can make that possible for one Chromebook per family. Board Member Man.
So for those families that come to a realization that they perhaps don't need the Chromebook, that they have enough equipment in their home, can we talk about where can they return that? That's part one of the question. The second thing is, if we have folks that are in the community that are in a position to give an item, like a computer or something, to another family, should that be done through the school, or should that be done separately between individuals? So two parts.
Mr. Baker?
So the first part of the question, we can just work in inverse order as far as deployment. So a family should contact the building principal of one of the buildings, multi-child family. So the deployment model is decentralized buildings to students and families, and to take devices back, we follow the same model. So devices come back to one of the buildings of one of the children. And if we're talking about device sharing that is of a private nature, I really wouldn't be able to speak to that and a workable model for. I will say very strongly, though, that if we're talking about district devices, we absolutely need to be the authoritative record of first reclaiming that device and then redistributing that device. We have very strict and important inventory protocols.
So I think, Ms. Man, what you're asking about is, this is a tricky, this is a very tricky situation, and we have faced this among my children's school many times regarding transportation, which is, the district cannot tell me that it's okay for you to put my kid in your car, but I can get together with you and we can arrange a carpool, right? This is the same problem with the devices, if I'm creating the analogy. What the district is not in a position to do is to receive a cacophony of miscellaneous used devices and redistribute them, because our staff is so, so strung thin just trying to manage the devices that we have and the process that we're involved in, that they just can't validate those devices, set them up, make sure that they're virus safe, right? So that level of interpersonal sharing, I think, is something, if I'm hearing Mr. Baker right, he would love to see that happen through some sort of third-party or informal networks. And I might ask whether social workers in schools might have some insight, as we do for, for example, mitten trees and other sorts of ways that we share resources within a school community or among school communities to say, hey, I happen to have this old laptop that doesn't do much, but it does have an internet connection, and maybe get that repurposed, but it would have to be family-to-family, because the district can't take responsibility for that technology. Ms. Smith?
My only other concern about that, though, is the maintenance and service and all of that, because that's not going to fall on the district, am I correct? Right? So that's the downside.
Right. 100%. It has to be family-to-family, informal. The district can have nothing to do with it, just like if my laptop, I don't know, if I leave my water bottle open in my bag and I drown my laptop, which many of you know I have done within the last year, I did not get to call Mr. Baker and say, Mr. Baker, please fix my laptop, right? If somebody else gets your laptop, if you give a laptop to somebody else, it's your laptop and you have to deal with it. So that is unfortunate. We would love to have the resources, and I have this dream that somewhere out in the community, there's a group that's going to generate a little like, kind of like Albany Bike Rescue for computers. I think that would be fantastic, but it's not going to be something that we have the staff to support and provide. Dr. Chatur?
I know some radio stations are actually doing support for Chromebooks and stuff. They keep talking about it, and a Fly 92 had the thing in the morning. With regards to the private computers, there's also the issue of security protocols. And what I would recommend, Mr. Baker, is if there are any guidelines as to what parents could do in the parental control so that it doesn't disrupt the Google Meet environment, the Google Classroom environment, to post those, so people can make sure that other things don't happen on private devices, because the district devices, you can control fully.
That would be very helpful, I think, for parents to have some, you know, suggestions about how to navigate and manage their own devices. Thank you. Board Member Creji?
I just had a question regarding scheduling. I know that you posted to the website that beginning yesterday, schedules would be made available, and I wasn't clear for that. No? Oh, okay. I don't know what day it is. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Tuesday, I think the schedules are supposed to be.
Coming Tuesday. Okay, thank you.
Which, of course, is very, an interesting conversation, given the conversation we've just had, but, you know, we're going to just have to keep trucking along and doing the best we can. Anyone else on, we've really fleshed out all of the content of the slide, but any of these sort of reopening, you know, parents have really been asking you, how did they find out? What are they supposed to do? Really, I hope people will understand, like, call your principal or email your principal is always the first line of defense, because they know a lot about what to do next. Anything else on reopening at all? If, oh, Board Member Creji?
Are we considering any type of paper packets or anything to supplement until we get to the one-to-one model for Chromebooks, especially for the younger students?
I'm going to turn the time over to Ms. Bechtel or Dr. Wilson Turner.
In regards to beginning, I did want to let the board know that there has been one accommodation in regards to the Chromebooks, and that is, is that we will run our elementary orientations in first days of school in the morning, and our secondary in the afternoon. And we did that purposely. So given that, we understand that there is a household Chromebook. Loosely, that is, we'll run around between eight and 11:00, nine to 12:00 in the late buildings at elementary, and loosely 12:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon for secondary. All our schools will be notified of those exact times, as we just finish up this last bit here. And I will also tell you that through the ninth through the 11th, which is orientation time, we are not expecting children or families to be on for that three-hour period. We are scheduling those three-hour periods, a K-2 period, a 3-5 period, a 6-8 by academy at the high school, so that we can have student and parent orientation that are running in staggered times. It is really, really vitally important in this new environment that our parents are just as oriented to the virtual program as our students. So that's the look of those first few days. They're a little looser. As we get into the 14th through the 17th, where we're at the secondary level, a little bit more period by period, we still are focusing on those social-emotional items, those getting ready for the virtual environment. We're not diving into content the way that we might have in a normal year. I think the 21st through the 25th, you'll see more content, and then with the 29th being our full-day kickoff. So those are some of the highlights there. In regards to the grab-and-go bags, as we call them, we've been working feverishly over the past several weeks. We anticipated having those kinds of items for both virtual and in-person students, art kits, PE kits, you know, not the music kits. We've been purchasing some software. We have purchased Smart Music, which will help us with practice and lessons. We have purchased Gizmos, which is a virtual science lab program. So, and then the district has purchased NearPod, which is really an instructional tool. So we've really been working these past six, eight weeks, planning and then preparing and purchasing what we could. Many of these items came out of grant funds in an effort to ensure that we can have that robust program that we're looking for. I don't know whether Dr. Wilson Turner wants to add anything to that, but that's a bit of an overview.
And I would agree, Karen. We're not looking to send home paper packets at this point in time, because our focus is that overview. And I commend the elementary principals because they actually felt that even though we were relegated to the morning, they will do an afternoon session for families who may need that availability. And as indicated, everything will be recorded. We're trying to be very cognizant of the fact that families need to be able to access when they can access, particularly due to the fact that we're at one device per household.
So do we anticipate that we're going to be able to announce the actual specific schedule? I mean, most people's work schedule requires them to give their employer a little bit of notice, and we're talking about next week. So are we anticipating being able to release the actual schedule? So grade three-to-five parent schedule at this school is going to be at this time tomorrow? Are we at that point? Otherwise, you know, it's the next, it's really soon, this next week.
The sessions, as Dr. Wilson Turner pointed out, number one, the sessions are about an hour, possibly even 45 minutes, so that, so they're briefer than you might, they're about this three-hour period of time. So that is one thing that will make it easier for those parents who work to try to get in and access. And secondly, the idea that we can record these and post these is also an additional benefit. But yes, we're, I don't know that tomorrow is the day, but certainly the next few days.
Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to ask whether or not we had special sessions for our ENL students, particularly the parents whose English is not their first language.
So, at the elementary level, and I'm sorry, I'm a little excited, because we debriefed with our summer school teachers, some of whom are ENL teachers, and they actually strongly suggested that their opening time in orientation, in those opening days that are virtual, be spent in one-on-one sessions with translators, or small group sessions with translators, to be able to acclimate our ENL families, particularly our youngest learners, of what we are doing with this new model of reopening school, make sure they're understanding where their child is actually going to school, what all the plans have been. And so as always, our ENL staff is dedicated to making sure those families get the level of communication that they need, so they can understand what the process is. And I don't know if Ms. McKenna wanted to add from the secondary level.
Yeah, and that's the same for the secondary level, very similar to what we did for the reentry plans when we did our one-to-one forums with our ENL families.
Thank you.
Dr. Chatur?
Want to talk about the students at the other end of the spectrum. The high school, we were doing the hybrid model with the one-day pod. Now that we're going to a full virtual model, but the CTE students, automotive, culinary, whatever, we're not going to be able to come in that one day and interact with their teacher and do hands-on things. Can we talk a little bit more about that?
So Ms. McKenna and Ms. Bechtel, if you will respond?
This is an aspect of the program that we're still looking into. We have to find a way for the students to be able to access those labs in the spring. We did, we did things like getting cooking materials and cooking supplies home for our culinary students and things of that nature. But I think we can, as we get into it, I think that we can look at doing something more robust. We just haven't really, we just are not there yet in terms of those kinds of programs. I don't know whether Ms. McKenna would like to add something.
Yeah, and the state has not come out with their full guidelines around the number of hands-on hours that students have to maintain in order to get their pathway or their certificate, with the exception of the CNA pathway, where they have reduced the number of hours for that internship from 150, I believe, to 30 hours, and the rest can be done in a virtual environment. And I do know that the CTE teachers are, will be onsite, and they will be videoing and recording lessons, you know, as an example, you know, in the automotive program where the teacher would be videoing themselves in, you know, changing the oil, or some part of a, I'm not a mechanic, so, but some piece of equipment or part on a car. And same thing with the cosmetology and the culinary arts program. And same thing with the cosmetology and the culinary arts program as well.
I guess I'd like to just connect what you just asked about with my original comment about looking for ways to equitably treat our students, because this is just another one of those cases where a 20% cut does not hit every district evenly, right? Being out of the building does not hit every student evenly. And so if we can free up any resources to equitably distribute to in-person education, this would be another area, I think, that we would want to prioritize because it is much harder to learn, learn cosmetology by video than it is to learn, say, calculus. And that's, that's a real practical, true thing. That means it's an inequitable impact of what appears to be an equal treatment. And so we just need to be tuned into those, wherever we can find those pockets, if in fact, we can release enough money and teaching capacity to do that, we should try and do that. Anyone else? Dr. Chitauri has another finger up, but he's had the last two. Anybody else? Dr. Chitauri? Oh, board member Kriti? In at the minute.
I just want to echo what Ms. Savage said, especially if there's a 30-hour training requirement for the certified nursing assistant students, that's the difference between them being able to go get a job and not. I would really want to make that the highest possible priority.
I believe those 30 hours are off-site, correct, Lori?
They are. And yes.
Go ahead.
I mean, I'd like to find the bright spot in all of this. Since it's going to be fully virtual, Albany High students are not going to be in the building. So if there's any way to speed up the construction and gain some time and savings there.
So I will defer to Ms. Roaring.
Good evening. Actually, we have started having some of those conversations. And while we're not sure that we can actually pull forward schedule, there may be some other things that we can realize in terms of dollar savings. So we are looking at that closely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For those listening in at home, I remind you that while dollar savings at Albany High would be fantastic, they are not dollars that can be brought to bear on the operational program because of the regulations around capital funding. So it would be great and it would allow us to extend our capital project and do future capital projects as needed in the district, but it would not solve our budget woes, even if we are able to find those savings, as Ms. Roaring has explained. Anyone else with reopening questions? Because, oh, Mr. Elmen Yawee?
I just want to reiterate something that I said in the last couple of board meetings, that any kind of volunteerism or donation to the school district would be fantastic right about now. And I know that certain schools have set up drives, and I just want to bring the attention to those drives, whether they're mask drives or PPE drives or whatever they are. We certainly are going to need to act like a well-tightly-knit community slash village.
Yeah. I was actually very impressed by the quality of the production around the Serve Albany event. That was great to see. They increase, you know, attempting to get an increase, not only increasing mentors, but a real central message about how you can access opportunities to volunteer in our schools through many organizations, all marketed through one, servealbany.org, I think. Yes, servealbany.org. The other plug, I guess I should make, I think most folks listening at home would know this, but Albany Fund for Education is our not-for-profit that supports the City School District of Albany. So if you have dollars that you would like to donate, they can be donated through your local PTA, but they can also be donated through the Albany Fund for Education that I know has been working very hard to figure out the most effective way to distribute their limited resources. So we appreciate your reminder, Ms. Elmen Yawee, about the need for volunteerism and donations of dollars as well as donations of time.
It would be great to have some donations from the nonprofits that actually causes part of this problem. The wealthier ones that own a lot of property.
Moving right along, does anyone have anything else for the good of the order? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Chitauri, seconded by board member Kriti, all in favor. That is unanimous. We are adjourned.